Okay.
We don't know what letter that is.
Okay.
This one's beginning. This one's beginning.
Okay.
That's one of the sixes. Hers is a six-oh.
Okay. Okay, we're going to call the council meeting to order. It started a little bit late at 6:10. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 18th council meeting. And if, as a reminder, if you have electronic devices, could you please turn them off or silence them? And I'd ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation by Councilmember Begorlich.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Thank you. Dear Lord, we ask you to look over us as we conduct our business for the city and our citizens. Please guide us to serve our residents with cooperation and in the best interest of our community. Help us to work together to find common ground through issues that face our amazing city. Help us to recognize opportunities and work through difficulties as we conduct our city business. We ask that you keep us close to you and protect us from evil. We ask that you watch over those serving in our military and protecting our freedoms, both here and overseas. We ask that you also bless our first responders as they conduct their day-to-day business. This we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Again, a reminder, if anyone would like to speak to any council on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda, there are forms in the back. You can turn them into the city clerk on my left side there. We'll start off with item number one, recognitions, proclamations, presentations, and board appointments. The first proclamation will be for the 2016 Firefighter of the Year, David Burton. And I'm going to have Chief Kemp and David come on up, and I'm going to read the proclamation.
Firefighter David Burton's career at the Temple Terrace Fire Department is approaching three years. However, in that short time, he's become a dedicated and productive participant in nearly every aspect of the Temple Terrace Fire Department. Some of these activities include participation in two of the department's competitive skills teams, the first being as a member of our Rapid Intervention Team, the RIT, as well as the Advanced Life Support Team, the ALS. He is also a member of the department's Honor Association and Firefighters Union, IAFF Local 3582. It is through these efforts that he has identified himself as an indispensable asset to our department. Rather than a front line of an emergency response or as an active participant striving to improve the goal and performance of his fire department, he always maintains the department's strategic goals and objectives. Firefighter Burton has not only embraced the challenge of working in the small department, but has taken it upon himself to ensure that our fire department retains a sense of history, pride, and camaraderie. Since being hired on March 8th, 2015, his goal has been to build upon the generations before him and shape the future for those to come. Firefighter Burton is a dedicated family man to his wife Jessica and four teenage daughters, Carly, Katie, Mackenzie, and Madison, and we are proud to honor firefighter David Burton as the Temple Terrace Fire Department's 2016 Firefighter of the Year.
(applause).
Do we have anybody that takes pictures anymore?
Yes.
(laughter).
Great, thank you.
If I can say a few words or introduce anybody that they're here?
Say a few words. Let's say a few words.
My family's not here. No, I appreciate this. It was unexpected. When I received it, I just try to do everything I can for the department. I love working here. That's it. Thank you very much. I'm very honored.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. We're going to go to item B, which is a presentation of the Police Department's accreditation certificate to City Council. And Police Chief Ken Albano is going to go ahead and present this and explain to us what this is for us.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Boss, members of City Council. It's my honor to be able to represent the Police Department stand before you, but it's not all my credit that we are once again receiving our reaccreditation award. It is a credit to the men and women of your police department. I've been involved in accreditation for over 20 years, and accreditation serves throughout the state of Florida as what we in accreditation refer to the gold shield of, the gold seal, rather, of law enforcement professionalism and excellence. Well, this council, before you even council members, although some of you have been on the council for a long, long time, recognized this police department as being amongst the greatest police departments throughout the state and, in my opinion, anywhere. And accreditation doesn't make you great. What it does is it points out that you are at the standard throughout and across the state that agencies, 1,000-member agencies, all the way down to five and six-member agencies, are meeting the same standard of that excellence, the same scrutiny, and the same requirements are held for each and every one of us. It is voluntarily inviting a peer assessors to come into your organization and look through every single nook and cranny of everything that you do. It's one thing, you know, to go out each day, and our officers certainly do, and earn the trust and the respect of our citizens. This is just an example at the next notch above that says that we've opened our doors, and it's an assurance to you and our citizens that we do meet that mark, that we do meet that mark of accreditation that every other agency throughout our state does. So I would like to take the opportunity to invite the members of the Police Department that are here to present this. I'm going to present this to Vice Mayor Boss, actually, and through him to the City Council and through you to our citizens, because we may be at the tip of the spear, we may be the ones that are inspected and scrutinized and have to come up to par, but this is the citizens' accreditation award. This is your accreditation award. So I'm going to present this on behalf of the department to Vice Mayor Boss. I'm going to ask the officers to come forward. And if you guys would do like you do when you take your picture, if you'll come together a little bit, I'd like to get a picture of all of you. I know you all couldn't be there when we received it. Six years now that we've been accredited. Three more times, three more times through it, 15 more years, and we'll get the Excelsior status, because we have that level of professionalism and performance. And I'm very proud of this agency, and I know all of you are. So I'd like to present this to you.
We'll scooch in and then we'll see who's pushing in together. I think we'll sit, we'll stand here below you.
Only short people in this house.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
(applause).
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I was fortunate enough to be there when the accreditation was announced, and I will tell you that there were cities who did not get reaccredited, and some of them had really good excuses, but guess what? Applying is not, does not mean that you're going to be reaccredited. And it was a sad note to see those cities come so close. But, so this was not something that you automatically get. So I was truly proud to be there, and thank you for inviting me. It was an enjoyable day.
And again, congratulations to the men and women of our Police Department for the fine work they do. It's a very difficult task to get this accreditation, and there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that has to be done along with the regular day-to-day jobs that you have to perform every single day. So thank you very much. It was an honor working with most of them before. Most of them. (laughter).
Well, the good news is that's probably shared.
Okay, thank you. Again, now we're going to go to number, a letter C, the School Support Committee Appointment. There are two vacancies on the School Support Committee as of June 30th, 2017. According to city policy, City Council policy, this opportunity for service was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, and the notice was broadcast on the city cable channels 39, 641, as well as placed on the city's website. The city received one application for service on the School Support Committee from Nathan Redmond. A copy of his application is attached for council's review and consideration, and I believe Mr. Redmond's here. Would you like to speak before the council?
Nathaniel Redmond, 306 Bellevue Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to apply. You know what I like to do for the city. I like to support it, and I like trying to make it better. If I selected to this board, you know the type of work that I will do. You know that I'll give 110% to everything that comes before me and go above and beyond to make sure that the city is looked after. I do have a daughter that attends Hillsborough County Schools, so I do have a personal stake in the interest of what goes on in our school system, as well as whenever I retire. I would like to become educated within this school system as well, so I'd like to take opportunity to take a few years and take a look at the school system, be able to work with some of the other educators and leaders out there, and support them the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair will ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Nathan, Nathaniel Redmond, to the School Support Committee for a term extending from July 18th, 2017 until July 18th, 2020.
Move to approve.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved.
If the minutes are acceptable, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll move to the item of persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda. Once again, if you would like to speak, I have a couple before me on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, forms are in the back. Please give your name and address when you come to address council, and you'll have three minutes. The first person to speak is Annette Renney, and I believe she wishes to address the city manager.
Hi, Annette Renney, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. I'm here to read a letter from Norman and Vicki Morris to the city manager, to the city manager. We are Vicki and Norman Morris. We reside at 513 Richland Street, next to the drainage pond at, on 7/10/17, we received a lot of rain in a short period of time, and the pond overflowed into the street. On 5/214, the same incident happened, and the pond overflowed and flooded my house with up to three inches of water. The reason for that was the pond pump was not working. On 7/10, I contacted the city public works. They sent someone out that the person said there was nothing he could do. The next morning, when I left for work, the pond had only receded out from the road. I emailed the city manager. By 10:00 a.m., the workers were out. They're getting it done and something, solving the problem. Thank you to the city manager for the quick reaction. We appreciate it. Norman Morris.
And I'd like to make that call. Thank you.
Next item, next person to speak is Mr. Russ Oberbrocking. Ober, Brockling. He would like to speak on buddy baseball.
Russ Oberbrockling, 639 Gillette Avenue, Temple Terrace. I'm here today representing buddy baseball. I want to thank the city of Temple Terrace. They're helping us getting a brand-new baseball field for our league. We started our league eight years ago this month. It's our eighth birthday, and we've noticed more and more players every year. We have several players that play that require wheelchairs or walkers. And Carl Langfield of the city of Temple Terrace said, "How would you like if we could build two brand-new fields for you, pour in place all synthetic rubber?" So I want to thank Carl for bringing it to our attention. I want to thank the city manager, Mr. Stevenson, for helping us out, getting us going. As you know, the state of Florida, with the help of Louis Betts through Charles, awarded us $250,000. We're getting ready to a capital campaign of raising another $250,000. We've identified our heavy hitters, and we start collecting some money hopefully real soon. We have some good connections to hopefully can build two fields. We have enough for one, but we'd like to raise the other $250,000 to build two, so more and more children from the Tampa Bay area can come to Temple Terrace, enjoy the game of baseball regardless of their disability. So thank you very much to the city for helping us out. You've been a big supporter from eight years ago, and we started, I came into the office of James Chambers, and Carl was there, and another gentleman, and after five minutes of our discussion, they said, "We're on board." So they've given us excellent support the whole time, and we appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Next to speak is Cindy Muller on the beginning of school.
Cindy Muller, 5125 East 121st Avenue and the Temple Terrace Library Board. I'm just here to talk about the beginning of school. Everything's great. School grades are in Temple Terrace Elementary where I work. Stay to see. We're still going to work on that. Within the next three weeks, you're going to notice increased traffic. Shopping stores are going to be very busy, loud, children will be everywhere. The parents are beginning to smile a little bit more. Teachers, depends. Your teacher friends are going to be distracted, because we're looking for sales and we're getting to plan already. The rec pool will be a little quieter in a few weeks. It's going to be more available for some of you ladies that I see there every morning. But what I want to do now is invite all of you, council, vice mayor, residents, to come into your local schools. We still have struggles. We're, we are working diligently every day, very hard, but we need the help. We talked about having people come in to read with or read to, and I know that's taxing or daunting for some people. My own brother is intimidated by me because I have a college education, so he doesn't like to come into his own kid's school. But it's, you know, you don't have to do anything major. Come in and listen to a child read. Read to a child. Listen to a group. It's very low-key unintimidating, I promise. We're all glad that you're going to be there. The only thing you have to do before you come to the schools, and give us about a month or so to get acclimated, you have to go on the school district website and register to volunteer. It's not where it used to be when my kids were little, itty-bitty. You could just show up and go, "Here's my driver's license. I want to read." You have to register ahead of time, and after school starts, it begins to be flooded. So if you go to the school district website, you can register, just type volunteer, and it'll pop right up, and it honestly takes seven minutes. I've done it many times in the past year. So if anybody would like to, please come to the Temple Terrace Elementary or any other local school, and we'll be glad to welcome you in our doors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jan Tumbleson. She wants to speak on 510 Hibiscus and BPAC. I'm not sure if they're two different issues or not.
They're, yes. Vice Mayor.
Name and address, please. Thank you.
Yes. Jan Tumbleson, 208 Holland Avenue. First, I want to thank you. I'm addressing you to resign from the BPAC Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Jonathan Forbes, who is also representing the city of Temple Terrace, is a great person. He's a bicycle enthusiast, and I want to thank you for letting me represent the city of Temple Terrace. Also, I would like to talk about 510 Hibiscus. Okay, this is going to be short and sweet. Okay. I would like to praise the city for acting upon all the issues that have been in that house. I want to thank the city manager, the Police Department, code enforcement, for working together on 510 Hibiscus. The countless hours that have been spent on this issue, on this situation, is going to be completely resolved soon. So I thank you for your patience, and thank you for all of y'all's activity on this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? I don't think I have any more forms in front of me. Yes. Name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Anne Marie Nikter, 904 Druid Hills Road, Temple Terrace. I just want to say thank you to the Temple Terrace Fire Department. About four or five weeks ago, I pulled up to my street, not to my house, because they wouldn't let me go to my house. Apparently, there was a, and I hope I get this right, a heating oil tank buried in the backyard next door to my house, and it was leaking, and the fire department was there. And the reason I want to say thank you is because when I pulled up, they wouldn't let me go on the street, but I could go around and park in another part of the street and walk into my house. But the firemen were very professional. There was no panic. There was no, they answered the questions as best as they could, and they were there till about 11:30, 12 o'clock at night. Apparently, this tank had been buried for a long time, and it, a lawnmower had hit it, and it would rain so much that it started leaking, and it leaked all the way down the side of, between the two properties to the street. You could see the oil on the water as it was going down the street. But they were very professional. They were very helpful. And again, there was no panic. I asked them if they had ever worked on anything like this before, and they said, "No." So I just wanted to say thank you, and I've always admired the fire department, but I've never had occasion to work with them or to encounter them, and I did on that night. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak on items not on the agenda? All right, we're going to move on to our next item, which is the consent agenda. I'll turn this over to the city manager, Charles Stevenson. He'll explain the items listed on the consent agenda for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items on consent agenda this evening. The first is a resolution approving an unlocal agreement with Hillsborough County for the shared distribution of funds associated with routine patrol and boater safety enforcement on the Hillsborough River. Since 1993, the city has, and the county have engaged in this mutual agreement of sharing these funds. The revenue is derived from the boat registration fees imposed by the county. Temple Terrace has allotted a revenue of $60,000 each year and is used towards the salary and benefits of our full-time marine patrol officer during the upcoming year. The second item, 5B, is a resolution officially provided, providing to risk management, I'm sorry, public risk management, notice that the city is withdrawing from participation in the Florida Health Trust pool. In accordance with the contract documents, we must notice PRM. This is our insurance carrier, our health insurance carrier. About July 30th of this year, the city's been with PRM for the last three years and has absorbed increases in the health insurance policies totaling about 18.4%, with a notice that this year, rates would go up another 7%. City administration has been shopping around for new insurance in January for better rates and coverage for city employees in anticipation of this, you know, substantial increase. And we're trying to find some other insurance options for our employees. Written notice needs to be sent to the executive director of the Health Insurance Trust, accompanied with a copy of this resolution. Without providing notice, required the agreement with PRM will continue in force with that 7% increase. At this time, we are solidifying a, some negotiations with United Health right now. I think that we were supposed to receive some information today. I don't know if we've done that, but it certainly is a situation that is going to help not only the city, but the employees moving forward here. So with that, I recommend that both resolutions be approved at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Are there any persons in the audience who wish to address council on any of these items? Seeing none, council. What is your desire on this? Ms. Donahue.
Since there are only two, can I pull one and prove the other one? Or is that the procedure you would like to do? Or can I just ask a question about one?
You just want to ask?
I just want to, I just want to hear more about what, I understand that you have to do this in a timely fashion about the health issue. I just want to hear more about what the procedure is, like how close are we? Or are we, do we take this now to the employees and say, "Okay, we have these two plans"? Or are you, you said you only mentioned one insurance company, so, I mean, you must have been doing this for a while, so just fill us in.
Before you respond, Mr. Vice Mayor, can we pull B?
Well, that's what I wanted to know.
Because I want some discussion on this too, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we'll pull item B from the consent agenda. Is there any issues regarding item A? Chair will entertain a motion regarding approving consent agenda item A and pulling item B.
I move to approve item A.
There's a motion, and there's a motion to second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Item B for discussion.
Yeah, we, Ms. Donahue, we've been working on this for several months. And again, last year, we absorbed about a 13% increase from PRM with very little notice. I don't know that we anticipated another 14% increase, but we certainly anticipated an increase from them. That seems to be the, their method of moving forward here. In anticipation of that, we started reaching out and talking with entities, Hillsborough County and Plant City, about maybe piggybacking and going on their insurance, there are restrictions, restrictions, financial restrictions to that that really we couldn't afford to do. Hillsborough County would be an excellent choice, but in talking with Mr. Merrill downtown, he is anticipating a major change next year as well. He says that insurance is hurting them as much as it is us. On top of that, in order to get onto their, they're self-insured, so they want a pretty good-sized bank from us. I don't know that we can afford it at this time. We have been comparing our plans. We currently have four plans with, with PRM. Florida Blue is who it's with. They have become really not sustainable. We, we just, we can't absorb another increase in insurance. We have looked at our plans. We have compared our plans to other jurisdictions from Tallahassee to Key West. So we've done a lot of homework here. We do have a committee that all the departments have contributed a liaison, if you would. We've tried to give the departments a heads-up on what's happening with insurance. I think everybody is cognizant of the fact that something's got to change, and we're looking to change something. We were given some final numbers from United, United Insurance. We had sent those back and said, "Here's where we need to be." So that's where we're looking at. Our cost of insurance will go down this year. That's what we've been working on so hard with. I can guarantee you that the coverage will not suffer. It won't be any different than what we've offered in the past, except for the high plan. We're getting rid of the high HMO. It's become too expensive for us to carry. There is a change afoot with our health insurance. Primarily, what's triggered this is that we've got, we've got a $2 million plan with, a $2 million plan, and we've got about $3 million worth of claims. That doesn't work real well. Insurance companies are not going to lose money. So they're, they have continually, PRM is continually, and this, what we're trying to do this year and moving forward is to change the culture that we have, and that we have got to look at how we're doing insurance. We have to, we got, we have, we have, we have developed a routine of using the most expensive provider that we can, that being the ER room. And what we're trying to do is discourage the employees from going to the ER room and going to an urgent care. We can provide that care, that same care, at about the third of the cost. Okay? So changing- So changing culture just a little bit is part of what we're going to try to do this coming year. If we can get our claims down to what our, what our premiums are, we're going to be in a little bit better negotiating seat come next year. That's what we're trying to do. Our family coverage is way out of whack. I can't tackle all this at one year, but we are going to tackle it next year. So we've worked real hard, and Janet, Janet Bloodsoe and our HR department, we've spent countless hours. I know more about insurance now than I ever want to know, believe me. So with that, our movement away from PRM requires that we have a resolution from council in order to notify them under the contract documents that we had in place for the last three years in order to get out of that contract. So that's the purpose of the resolution.
Councilmember Ross.
Do, I have a question. I know there's, may not be a simple answer to this because it depends on each employee's.
There's never a simple answer when it comes to insurance.
So I know, I know that it depends on whether you have a family plan or a single plan, I get that. But can you give us some idea of what the net savings, the range of savings may be for the average city employee?
Mr. Ross, at this time, no, I can't, but, because I haven't gotten the final numbers yet.
Okay.
I mean, they, they were sent back to the drawing board and say, "Here's where we need to be."
Okay. Can you, can you give us any assurance at this point that the employees are going to at least be neutral and not adversely impacted?
I can do that.
Are they going to save money? Is that?
I'm hoping that they will save money, okay? I'm hoping that the city will save money. We've given them a price point, and it's based on the current plans that we have, so that the plans that we are going to offer, the city employees will not change significantly. But it will encourage them, okay, to go to the urgent care instead of the ER. In other words, if you want to go to the ER, you pay $100. If you want to go to the urgent care, you pay $20 or $30, whatever it is.
Here's my concern in a nutshell, and it looks like we have to do this, we have a drop-dead date that we have to do this by. But here's my concern. We don't have this new deal locked in.
Correct.
So when the new deal comes along, obviously, I'd like to see the city save some money. We all would. But I also want to make sure that the city saves money, not on the backs of the employees, that their coverage remains equal to or better than what they have with no cost or some savings to them. What I'm concerned about is when we get the final deal, we've already backed out of this. And then we get the final deal, and we say, "Well, the only way the city can remain cost-neutral is we bump it up 3% for the employees."
Yeah, I don't.
I don't, I don't like that.
Well, we're not, we're not anticipating that happening.
Well, nobody ever is.
Well, you know, I don't know what assurance is, you know, when you get insurance, you get no assurance.
When do you anticipate having the?
I mean, they were supposed to, did they, did they get back with us with numbers?
About an hour ago.
Okay. So based on the numbers that they've now given us, okay, I know where they were two weeks ago. Well, not two weeks, just last week. I mean, I, I, they can't come in any, any higher than that. I mean, I, we have set a price point with them, so.
Janet Bloodsoe, HR, if I could just add a couple of things. It's, it's not so much the 18.3% over the last three years and now another 7%, which we did not get until June 19th. We didn't have that information until June 19th. Those are increases on top of premiums that are already too high. The majority of the employees are not covering their spouses, their children, their families because they can't afford the very high premiums. And the Riches Plan, we probably have 25% of the employees enrolled in it, and yet, over 50% of the claims are on that plan, on the Rich Plan, because people can go anywhere they want, basically, and pretty much everything is paid by the plan. So, you know, our premiums are 2.1 million, and our claims are like 2.2 million. So we're in a very bad position to negotiate a great deal, but I think we do have a very good deal coming, and employees have been asking for a long time for a health savings account. The Health Trust now offers a health savings account, but the premiums aren't realistic. They're not realistic to sign yourself and your family up for it and still have money left over to put into a health savings account. The plans we're negotiating have an excellent health savings account. All health savings accounts, none of them can have a copay. So there's not a whole lot of difference in the health savings accounts, other than the deductibles for family and for individual. But they're, they're going to offer some excellent premiums that people who feel like, you know, they're young, they're healthy, their families are young, they don't need all this insurance. If they're interested in a health savings account, they can participate in that and put all those other dollars into a health savings account. They're their dollars. They can carry them forward. It's not use it or lose it. It's beneficial. We have the time crunch because we didn't get the rates until June 19th for the Health Trust. There was no meeting on July 4th. So we're in a situation now where to meet the 60-day deadline for notifying them and writing along with a resolution. That's, that's how we ended up in this.
Right. And let me, let me just say, make one more remark, and I'll let you, I quit beating the horse. But it's a big issue. It's important.
It's huge. It's huge.
Here's my concern. You mentioned 25% of the city's employees are on the top-tier plan, right? Which is where most of the.
It's a very rich plan.
Very good plan. That's where most of the money is spent because the benefits are good.
Right.
Here's my concern. I would hate to see us do away with the top-tier plan, lower the coverage that's available to everybody, so those 25% of employees can no longer get that same level of coverage that they are accustomed to.
Right, right.
Now, everybody's got lesser coverage.
Right.
We saved a little bit of money, but we took the good insurance away from the 25% of the employees who are taking advantage of the good coverage. That, that's, that's lowering the pond at the expense of 25% of the employees that are getting good coverage. And that's what I wouldn't want to see happen.
And that's, that's a good point. Probably, though, this year, each year that the premiums have gone up, more and more people have moved off of that plan. It is a very rich plan. It's one of the richest that the Health Trust offers. And in order to change the culture and get people to think twice about using the insurance and maybe shopping around for a lower-priced MRI, which you can do that these days, the only way we're going to be able to do that is to, to have them feel it when they're not going to just be able to go and, and give the card, unfortunately. And while we would love to have insurance with no premiums and no out-of-pocket, that, that just doesn't exist.
One last question. I'll let you off the hook here. What impact will this have on our retirees?
They'll have the same insurance that the other employees have, that, as far as, do you mean something specifically? I mean, they get the same, same choices, same elections, same options that the employees do. So it will affect them, I don't think it'll affect them differently than the employees, the active employees. I consider them employees, too.
If I can qualify something, and you're asking that the employees aren't affected monetarily here. If we keep that HMO plan, they will be monetarily because the way that we're trying to structure this is to reduce not only our costs, the city's costs, but also the employees' costs. So therefore, it's going to be what we're going to propose, and again, I don't know the numbers. I can't talk numbers with you. If they came in an hour ago, I don't know what the numbers are.
They did.
I certainly have an idea of where those, where those numbers hopefully come in and what we had discussed with United Healthcare. But there's going to be some effect. I, I, I mean, I, we have to make an adjustment here to our insurance. Okay?
Thank you.
I mean, last year, if I'm not mistaken, I think we ended up absorbing 7%. We passed on 3% or 4% to the employees. I don't want to do that again. It's kind of self-defeating. We give them a 4% increase in pay, and then we charge them 4% for more insurance because insurance is out of control. We've got to do something, and that's what we've been trying to do.
What is the drop-dead date? That's not a good term when you're talking about insurance, I know. What is the final date that we can notify them that we are not going to renew their?
It's the end of, end of this month. We've got to give them a 60-day notice.
I, I share your concern, Mr. Ross, that at this point, we're talking to a health, a health insurance company who now knows we have no insurance. So what's happened to our negotiation?
Well, let me tell you what.
If we drop it tonight, we have no, we have no anticipation of having a contract with anyone, and we're in negotiations to. And I realize this is not your fault.
No, it's not that we won't have insurance. Our insurance will be good until the end of this fiscal year. Between now and then, and between now and then, we will get a deal cut. We've been, we've been working on this for six months, okay? We know where everybody's at. We've gone to Florida legal cities. I mean, we've really, we've done a lot of shopping. So the commitment that we've given United is based on them coming in with a better number than we've been negotiating for the last three or four months, okay? I don't know what those numbers are. Again, I'm not privy to them yet, but we'll certainly find out in the morning.
And the employees have been brought along with this conversation. They've been.
We've had.
Messages to them through the department heads, I'm guessing.
Yes, ma'am. We've had a representative from each department, and we've had a series of meetings, informative meetings, letting them know what we're doing. So the particulars that we get now in the morning, we'll schedule a final meeting and make sure that everybody understands what the plan is, okay?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The only thing I would ask, I mean, I trust you guys, you, and these numbers are going, even if we had them, they'd be this big. But we don't have to notify them until July 30th? It looks like we're going to pass a resolution tonight. If those numbers do not come back as if you expect, there's time between now and July 30th to get us to undo this resolution. Is there not?
We, they, they won't accept our termination. Well, again, if they don't accept, if we don't send them the termination, we've got a 7% increase coming automatically.
Well, all I'm saying is, in the unlikely event that tomorrow morning, you go into Janet's office and you go, "Oh, this is not what I hoped for. We can not send this letter."
We can do that. I mean, we're not obligated to notice them until the end of the month. But again, I think they were supposed to get them to us Monday, so we'll get them. They got them to us on Tuesday.
And on that, on that issue. On that issue, Mr. Ross, let me just read to you the language that's in the agreement, so you got it. "Any member's withdrawal from the pool must occur at the end of the fiscal year upon servicing on the pool by mail, fax, or hand-delivery at least 60 days prior written notice. Such a notice shall be addressed to the Executive Director of the pool and shall be accompanied by resolution of the governing body of the member electing to withdraw from the pool." That's what we're considering right now. "Provided, however, any member who serves written notice of its intent to withdraw from the pool more than once during any three-year period may be required, at the option of the Board, to withdraw from the pool on the second such notice." So there's, that, that sentence that I just read to you contemplates that some of the members may, you know, adopt a resolution of this sort, but there's an opportunity not to withdraw from the pool. So I think that's something that we're going to want to, that, that's how we're going to, we're going to want to explore this.
Yeah, I agree.
Councilmember Burleson.
If I may, just, just to add some comfort to all these decision-making, this is not something that's unique to Temple Terrace. This is something that's happening everywhere. And the problem is, you know, late notices of increases, the fact that you no longer can compare apples to apples in any plan. It's apples to grapefruit and fruit salad, and, and you just, you know, you do what you have to do. I was happy to hear the changing of the, of the minds and the changing of the way of doing business. We have, in my company, which is about 1,000 times larger than the city of Temple Terrace, we're having the same discussions because, you're right. I mean, I had the same discussion with my wife. My wife went to see her, the pediatrician with my daughter. Pediatrician was at the lunch, so she went to the emergency room. They charged us $1,200 for a bottle of Gatorade because my daughter was, needed some water, okay? It would have been $100 if we sent the doctor. Okay, so we had that discussion personally as well, okay? So, and, and changing the hearts and minds of people and the way we do business for our own health is something we, we're going to, it's, it's a new norm, okay? It's not just Temple Terrace. It's the entire country. And until, you know, that borders get opened up and Blue Cross, Blue Shield can go everywhere, and United Healthcare can go everywhere, until we bring some competition back to this type of service providing, you're going to see the same thing happening from year to year. So I'm happy to hear you having those conversations. I'm happy to hear we're, we're doing some due diligence and getting some new insurance. And, you know, it's, it's something we're going to have to get used to because it's not going away. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Cheryl entertained a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda. I'm sorry, item B on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve a resolution approving discontinuation of service with PRM.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We move on to item six, public hearing ordinances and resolutions. First item we have is a resolution approving city council action regarding disposition of RFP 01-2017 submittals. City Manager Charles Stevenson, please explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At, at our last June 20th meeting, city council agreed that no respondents to the RFP 01-2017 would be invited to present their submittals to city council, as expected in the RFP. The conditions of the RFP provided that the Temple Terrace Redevelopment Agency would create a short list of respondents and then make a recommendation to city council that those individuals make an oral presentation before city council. At the agency meeting of June 20th, the Board recommended that no invitations be extended to any proposals for that presentation. City council, at a subsequent city council meeting, accepted that recommendation of the Board not to extend those invitations. Therefore, by approving the attached resolution as resolved, the city council accepts that recommendation of the Temple Terrace Redevelopment Agency and recognizes that no further obligations to the conditions of the RFP shall no longer be effective. Thank you.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, if the resolution is acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution approving city council action regarding disposition of RFP 01-2017 submittals.
Move to, excuse me, move to approve a resolution approving city council action regarding disposition of RFP 01-2017.
The motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Resolution is approved. Item B, we're going to, it's a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County School Board for use of Lewis Elementary Fields. I believe Carl Angerfeld, the Leisure Services Director, will come and speak to us on this item.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Boston, Members of City Council, Carl Angerfeld, Leisure Services Director. What I'm bringing to you this evening is a resolution approving an agreement between the city and the Hillsborough County School Board to construct the Buddy baseball fields on property that is owned by Hillsborough County School Board located to the east of the Family Recreation Complex. This, this project to build these fields started quite some time ago, and a lot of time and effort has gone into what has led us to this point, to determine what the needs of the players are, what would work for the schools, and what would work for the city. We've had meetings with the administrators of Lewis Elementary School, as well as the safety and construction arms of the school board to make sure it would fit within their scope of work at, at the school as well, to see if it could be of use to the school. The property that we'll be building it on is owned by the school board, but is maintained by the city through an existing interlocal agreement. What we have here is just a modification of an interlocal agreement allowing us to build this field on property owned by the school board. This is the first formal step in getting this, this field built. In the near future, there'll be another agreement coming to you from the state approving the expenditure of the funds that have been approved. And then, once we get that done, we start the actual construction process. The agreement with the state is for one year to spend the money. So within a year, we're going to be cutting a ribbon on this field and beginning to play baseball on it. So it's, it's a, it's a great project. It's going to be great for the community, great for the school, and great for the city. So this is the resolution that I'm bringing forward to you tonight and looking for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion?
Play ball.
Councilmember. Councilmember Ross.
Mr. Angerfeld, when did this idea originate?
This idea originated, I started looking into this project about a year and a half ago. I was doing some, I was actually out at the field watching one of the Buddy baseball fields and, and watching the struggle that some of the children in wheelchairs were having getting around a clay softball infield, and started poking around online about port and play surfaces that are now, are very common on playgrounds, to see if there would be something suitable for a special needs baseball program. And that's when I came across a lot of the products that are out there specifically for this type of activity. It was at the Business Expo, not this past one, but the year before, Russ was there, and I went up and I started chatting with Russ about it, said, "Hey, this is an idea I've got. What are your thoughts?" And he was all over it, and since then, it's, it's been a lot of discussions between him and I and the school board and the principal, and the city manager helped us with the, the city lobbyists to get some funding from the state, and it's all, it's all coming to fruition now.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
No.
Seeing none, if it's acceptable, a chair will entertain a motion to approve a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County School Board for the use of Lewis Elementary Fields.
I move to approve the resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County School Board and the use of Lewis Elementary Fields.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross.
First of all, great job.
Thank you, sir.
I'm thrilled, this is a wonderful project. It's a good use of money. I'm thrilled that the kids are gonna get this facility. I'm thrilled that it's gonna be in Temple Terrace. This is a wonderful project, and thank you for, for bringing it on. Wish the gentleman were here, and I'm gonna vote in favor of this. I mean, this isn't directed at you, but all that being said, the first I learned of this project was Friday. And, I, I don't know if I missed something, which could be, I mean, maybe it's got lost in my reading or something, but I, I, when I read this on Friday, I said, "Wait a minute. I've been raising hell with some of our local, our representatives in Tallahassee about some of the things that were going on during the legislative session. I had no idea that we were up there trying to get a quarter of a million dollars from them, at the same time that I'm beating them up about home rule." And then I, when I read this on Friday, I see that the resolution, the interlocal agreement that we're voting on tonight, has already been signed off on by the school board. So, all the functions that I've been to where I'm interacting with school board members raising hell about Temple Terrace schools, I find out they know about the Buddy baseball field, and I don't have a clue. So, I, I'm thrilled with the Buddy baseball, but I'm not thrilled with being the last person in the county to learn of this, and being asked to vote on this, where tonight, my only choice is to vote on this, or you're really gonna be the guy who votes against Buddy baseball? Right? But I've been boxed into a corner here, and I've known nothing of this. And I don't know if this was buried on page 872 of a package that I didn't make it through, but how did I miss this? Or did I miss this?
I don't know. We've had this conversation several times.
About the...
About what we were doing. I mean, I thought we did.
If we did, then I, then it's on me.
Is everybody else up here?
Well, I, I gotta tell ya, I'm in Councilman Ross's corner on this one. We had a discussion, I don't know how long ago, about what to send up to them for money, and I was with you when we, when we went to them and asked for money. Buddy baseball wasn't on there, okay? There were some safety issues on there. Safety, there were some projects that involved safety of our citizens, and that was the, the approach I took with them, rather than walking them through individual projects. I said, "Please look at our list. Say, 'There are some items on there that involve the safety of our citizens. We would like you to focus on those items, and if you can, give us money to cure those problems.'" Buddy baseball wasn't on that list. I'm happy, I think it's great.
I am too.
But, but I'm in Mr. Ross's corner.
I sincerely apologize, and I thought that council was well aware that we were lobbying for this money.
You got two counts.
You did a, you did a great job of beating them up, though, by the way.
Well, it was...
Yeah, a lot of good, yes.
I'm glad none of them said to me, "You realize that I'm gonna vote tomorrow on your quarter million dollar request?"
They didn't know.
I'm glad that I, but, did, did you guys know about this?
The only reason I knew is that I'm close personal friends with Mr. Oberbreckling, and am a participant in his, in his project, so I was aware from, from his side of the coin.
Well, my, my, my point is, and then I'll get off of it, but this is a strategic decision. It's big, it's great, it's wonderful, it's great. I'm, I'm, I would've been in favor of it, but I wasn't asked. And this is a, a big strategic decision. This isn't about, you know, whether we paint the recent or green or blue or whatever. This is, this is a strategic decision. I don't like being asked to vote on this kind of thing after it's a done deal. And I guess, that's all I have to say.
Is there any further discussion on the motion and the second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're gonna go onto a public hearing. This is item C. This is the first public hearing and first reading approving ordinance 1427 extending the medical marijuana moratorium. Now, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Senior Planner Lorraine Lynn will present this information to us.
Good evening. As you may recall, the Florida Medical Marijuana Legislation Initiative, also known as Amendment Two, was passed by voters on November 8th, 2016. City of Temple Terrace adopted a moratorium on October 18th, 2016, for, I think it was nine months. So, this is a, an extension of that moratorium. And the reason we are requesting the extension for 120 days is because while we were in the process of preparing a draft, and even got it to the planning commission, the legislature met again and came up with some significant changes to the laws. So, with that, we are recommending a 120-day extension of the medical marijuana moratorium.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add in here, so the enrolled legislation that was passed, so what it does do is the legislation provides a basis for municipalities to, I'll just read it to you, county or municipality made by ordinance ban medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities from being located within the boundaries of that county or municipality. A county or municipality that does not ban dispensing facilities under the sub-paragraph may not place specific limits by ordinance on the number of dispensing facilities that may, that may locate within that county or municipality. And then, there's limitations on the regulations that can be placed on them, in fact, except as provided otherwise in the, in the law. A county or municipality may not enact ordinances for permitting or for determining the location of dispensing facilities, which are more restrictive than its ordinances permitting or determining the locations for pharmacies licensed under chapter 465. So, that needs to be taken into consideration, that municipalities may outright ban them. To the extent that municipalities don't outright ban them, then they need to be careful about the manner in which they regulate them, as provided by this, this law, which John Morgan has filed a suit to attack this. But, that's really a matter of public policy for city council to determine how they want to proceed. And does the city want to simply adopt an ordinance that bans the dispensing facilities outright? Or alternatively, does the city want to adopt regulations that will be consistent with the new law?
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Now, I have comments from the general public. I have two people who would like to speak on this item. First is Ellen Snelling. Name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Ellen Snelling, 521 Lantern Circle. I'm here to support extending the moratorium, but I do recommend, considering nine months as, as opposed to three. The reason for that is that would get us through the legislative session, and I believe that the League of Cities and the Coalition of Counties may approach legislators to try to get local control back, and I know you all are interested in local control. It was just preempted by our legislature, and they promised, or at least they never said they were gonna take it away, but during the special session, that's what happened. So, I also suggest considering banning, because that is allowed. So, there's a number of cities and counties that are banning right now, or in the process of banning. So, the counties that have already banned medical marijuana dispensaries are Collier, Charlotte, Indian River, St. John's. Cities are Longboat Key, Naples, Anna Marie Island, Mexico Beach, Benita Springs, Estero, Vero Beach, and Coral Gables. Considering bans, Orlando, Orange Park, Fort Pierce, Sumter County, Winter Garden, Winter Park, Winter Springs. So, it's not, it's something that a lot of cities are doing, and if you look at their reasoning, some say, "Well, marijuana is illegal in federal law." And that's always a reason you can use. But the other is that they are not too happy about the legislators taking away home rule. So, that's kind of the way I look at it, is either the moratorium or banning, and really go after our legislators to give the ability to zone. So, like Mr. Connolly said, you can either ban or zone them like a pharmacy, and if you think about pharmacies around here, and you think about Publix, you think about CVS, Walgreens, small pharmacies, Winn-Dixie, there's a lot here. So, if you allow medical marijuana, they can go any of those places. So, any strip mall, they could be anywhere. The only restriction is 500 feet from a school, but that can actually be, they could get a special permit to be within 500 feet from a school. So, there are two dispensaries already located in Hillsborough County. One is only about two to three miles away, right by University Mall. So, the reason I'm bringing that up is patients who are eligible to get medical marijuana can access it now, that's a pretty close drive. Also, 24/7 you can get home delivery. So, as far as accessibility and use of medical marijuana, this has no effect on it, because really, they'd still be able to get their medical marijuana. So, it's a matter of, if we think it's a good fit within Temple Terrace in general, I personally would not like to see, we already have Coin Laundries, Hookah Lounges, Beauty Salon, Smoke Shops. There's certain things that we already have here that may not be attracting people to move, I don't know. But I, I don't feel like medical marijuana is the way to make our city amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jan Tumbleson. Name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Jan Tumbleson, 208 Holland Avenue. I support the continuing of the marijuana moratorium until more information and all aspects of the law are sifted out. So, please support the mere moratorium for nine months as of this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this? I have no other forms on it. If there's anyone else who would like to comment on this, please advise. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I ask councilmembers to, should I say concern, Councilmember Gorlich, and then Councilmember Donnie.
Couple, couple things. I think that we should actually consider a longer moratorium. Like our attorney said, that Morgan &amp; Morgan is gonna be suing the state over a lot of different elements of this. We probably should wait and see what comes out of that. The other thing I want to mention is, if I'm not mistaken, Hillsborough County has already approved, I think, 16 dispensaries within the, within the county limits. I'd like to, even if it takes a workshop for us to discuss it, to discuss banning dispensaries within the city limits. 16 dispensaries throughout the county is close enough for anybody that needs it, especially when you can get home delivery. I don't think we need to add that to all the other things that we've got going on within our city limits. So, I, I would, I would support a longer moratorium, and I would also support a workshop and, and ultimately, a motion to, to ban dispensaries within our city limits.
Councilmember Donnie.
Yeah, I would like, I have no problem with extending the moratorium, because we're, that's exactly what it is. It's a moratorium, and we're doing more due diligence, and I've never had a problem with that. But I do wanna, before we go into either a workshop or before we have any more discussion on this, I would like to know if we can find out how our voters voted, because across the state, I believe this was what, 70%? 77%?
Seventy, I think.
Voted to approve this. So, you know, if we were in line with that, I'd like to know how, how our citizens felt about that. And, and to be honest with you, I, I think our, even this resolution sort of points the direction on how we may be leaning. I mean, this says to control the adverse effects. I mean, you know, it, it's already leaning as if we are going to ban this, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about the language. I realize the moratorium is the most important thing that we're voting on, and I, and I agree, and I will approve that, but I would like, I would like to know a little bit more about that. And, and I also want to mention that the League of Cities has been putting out letters of support or, of however cities have been moving in the direction they've been moving in, and they pointed out that the clientele of these establishments are not, you know, your druggies, okay? These are people seeking medical, remember that word is medical, and that, and most of the time, these are looking rather trendy. They look more like doctors' offices or salons than they do, you know, they're, I believe that even the rules, the state rules, indicate the way they can advertise and how they can promote themselves and, and things like that. So, I'm all in favor of the moratorium, if it means that we are actually going to look at both sides of the coin, and not simply say, "We're looking for another reason to, to ban them outright." So, I'm not saying I'm totally in favor of having one in Temple Terrace. I, I just want to make sure that we, first of all, find out how did our city vote, and secondly, you know, what it means to have one if we decide. We're a small city, what are we, seven square miles? I, I agree with you, David, you know, county has...
Sixteen.
Lots of, lots of opportunities.
And keep in mind, we're not banning the use of it, it's just banning...
Oh, I know.
A dispensary.
Oh, I, I understand, but I'd like to know what would it mean to have one? What are the, what are the benefits of having one? Maybe there are some. I, I don't know that yet. I, I haven't done, I haven't done the, the homework on that, so...
Now, if you look, one of the things that it does for is it exempts the sale of marijuana and marijuana delivery services from sales tax. So, nobody's getting any benefit from it. But, we're on, we're on the same page?
Yeah.
I think we could, you know, if we just, you know, maybe we extend the moratorium longer than 120 days, you can get the voter data, we can have a workshop to discuss the pros and cons, and come up with a, a decision by council on what to do next.
So, do you want to propose a number of days?
I think some others people wanted to discuss it first.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, I've got a slightly different take on this. I mean, I'm all in favor of extending the moratorium. Actually, in my mind, we extend it just long enough to pass a resolution banning the whole thing. I don't, I'll go to the workshop, I mean, I'll extend it, I mean, I'm willing to, to listen, but I've done the research already. I did it before I voted. And I, I don't think that we need these in our city. Personally, and that's not a judgmental thing, I mean, I don't, I don't spend a lot of time worrying about what other people do in the privacy of their home. I, I don't care, as long as it doesn't impact me or my family. I really don't, as long as you're not out driving stone, what you do in the privacy of your own home, but I don't think it's good for the city to have these. I just don't, and I agree with Ellen, that they're, you can throw a rock and hit them already. It's not a big encumbrance if somebody lives in Temple Terrace, they can drive two miles and get their medical marijuana already. It's not a huge inconvenience. It's not like they gotta go to Orlando. And I don't think it's gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a good thing...
Yeah, I agree.
For our business community, for the image of our city, for the value of our property, for the, to drive down, and you've been to Oregon, I just came back from Oregon. This is what Oregon was four years ago, right? And, and we're sticking our head in our sand if we don't think that we're not gonna evolve the same way they did. So, in four years, five years from now, I, I just came from Oregon, you can throw a rock from one, one dispensary to the next, and under the... And under the state law, we either have to ban it, or we can only regulate it insofar as we can currently regulate pharmacies, which is nil. I mean, they can be right next door to each other. So, I think it's a more responsible position for us to extend this with, in my mind, with the idea that we ban it. Now, I'm all in favor of further education if we want to extend the moratorium and then study it further, I'm good with that. But I'll tell you, tell you and the public right now, I'm in favor of banning them.
Any other comments from council? And again, it gets tough sometimes to get a word in here.
We've got a good agenda tonight.
Yeah, no, but I'm again, in favor of extending the moratorium, and certainly in favor of doing more, yeah. Like Councilmember Ross, I certainly have knowledge of this and have done my education on it, have my own views on it, and will obviously come up at one point, we have a meeting on it, but right now, it's extending the moratorium. And I would be in favor of that, whatever timeframe anybody wants to come up with is good. If it's nine more months, that's fine by me, too, and we can look at it. I don't know what, kind of, who knows when the legislature's meeting again this year? I don't know, they change every year.
And on that point, I think as Mr. Ross just indicated, if you extend it 120 days, that provides you time to adopt an ordinance to ban them. It really doesn't provide you with time to analyze the issue and determine what you want to do with regard to regulation of pharmacies, because you'd have to modify your land development code with regard to how pharmacies are regulated, because these really can't be regulated any more strictly than you regulate pharmacies, except, you know, it does say that you've got the 500-foot distance requirement that was just mentioned. So, you don't necessarily have to make a decision on that tonight, but an extension would really be necessary in order for you to make further investigation into, you know, modification with regard to regulation of pharmacies and adopting regulations that would effectively relate to both. If the pleasure of the city council is instead to simply ban them outright, then we wouldn't need a moratorium extending more than 120 days.
Well, let me say this. I mean, my suggestion for a longer one was, quite frankly, to, we've never talked about this as a council
Right.
Until tonight. My thoughts, my personal thoughts are, we don't need any dispensaries in Temple Terrace. We don't need the headache of regulating them and having them on every corner. 16 throughout the county in my mind is enough. But if it helps other council members get educated, and they can see the will of the people and understand the cons, and there are a lot of cons of having dispensaries within your city limits, I don't have a problem doing the moratorium longer. That also allows, hopefully allows the litigious process to go forward, and maybe we can, maybe something comes out of that that changes something, I don't know, you never know. And quite frankly, in essence, putting a nine-month moratorium is the same as banning them for at least nine months. So, that's what I'm saying. I just don't, I just, I don't see the downside of extending the moratorium. It gives us, and plus, we've got, you know, the city as a whole has a lot on its plate. I don't want to push our staff into coming up with something in 120 days when we've got the budget to worry about, we've got redevelopment to worry about, we've got a lot of other things to worry about, and I just, I know how government works, and it's not fast. So, I think nine months is fair. It gives everybody a chance to get educated, it gives us a chance to meet at least once more as a body to discuss what we like. I mean, I think, you know where I stand, I think you know where some of the other council members stand, but I'm happy to allow you the opportunity to educate yourself further and maybe we can come to a full consensus on what we need to do. So, if there's no other, if there are no other comments, I'll go ahead and make a motion. If somebody else wants to say something, then I'll certainly wait.
My only comment is, I'm ready to ban it now. You're wasting staff time. I'm hearing three of you saying you don't want to do it.
Okay, if there's
So, why are we going to spin our wheels and not go there? I don't want one next to my house.
I don't want one.
Well, I do.
Okay, so, that's, if we're, if you can get them in 16 places in the county
16, yeah.
And you can get it delivered to your house, and you're six square miles, it's going to be more likely somewhere on 56th Street. So, that's just my position. I'm not supportive of it. You can have five workshops, you can have one workshop. My answer is still going to be to ban them.
Well, then, you know, I think, I agree with you. I'm, we're all, I think that there's at least three of us on the same page. But again, I want to make sure that we do it right, that when we ban them, we're not going to get sued for banning them. And I don't, if 120 days is enough time to get it done, tell me now. If you need more time, then that's what I'm going to recommend.
Let me get a comment in here that may resolve this.
Okay.
Why don't we, I'm in favor of banning them also. Why don't we go 240 days? Because one thing we are leaving out of this, I'm in favor of banning them, however, there's a whole, we cut somebody out of this discussion, and that's the public. We have not had opportunity to hear from our constituents, and I think the public deserves an opportunity to address us on this issue prior to us banning this. So, if we go six months, that's plenty of time. I mean, I've been on record, I'm in favor of banning it, but the public deserves an opportunity to come before us and try to persuade us otherwise.
If they want to.
If they want to. But we should provide an opportunity for the public to do that.
Okay.
So, why don't we go six months? That's plenty of time for us to schedule
So, 100?
240 days, that's
180.
180 days.
180.
180.
That's why I was in government, I'm not here.
Yeah. Six, I'm fine with that, so let's
So, why don't we do that?
That's fine. I will move that we extend the moratorium six months to allow for public comment and to allow staff to put together an ordinance pending the outcome of public comment to outright ban the marijuana dispensaries within the city limits.
I'll second that.
I know. So, they have to have a workshop.
Now, I just want to clarify how we're going to have the clerk read this.
Am I just changing it to 180 and have a workshop?
Okay. So, you're just going to change the reading of the ordinance with those?
I'm reading the title to 180.
Reading the title of it, because this is just the first reading approving ordinance.
Does that impact the legal ad at all?
No. The legal ad that we put out there puts people on notice that the city's contemplating adopting a moratorium. The reason that you have the process here is so that there can be discussion on it and modifications if need be. So, the next ad that will be prepared and presented for the notice of enactment will reflect the change from 120 days to 180 days.
I'll have to have them change it, because it's already gone in. So, hopefully, they'll be able to change it.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll have the city clerk read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, extending for a period of 180 days the moratorium presently in effect pursuant to ordinance number 1407 prohibiting the operation of any medical marijuana facilities within the City of Temple Terrace and further prohibiting the issuance of any business tax receipts, development orders, or permits for medical marijuana facilities within the city limit, providing definitions, providing for a retroactive effective date.
Okay, this revised ordinance is acceptable. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Motion is made, and I have a second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Donahue. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ordinance has been approved and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, August 1st, 2017. We can move on to item D, which is a first public hearing and first reading approving ordinance 1428 voluntary annexation. The public hearing is now open. And senior planner Lori Lynn will present to us.
We received a voluntary annexation application, I guess in April, from, the applicant is Clayton Burkemeier, representing D.R. Horton, and the owner of the property is 208 Holdings LLC. It involves three parcels of land totaling 26.66 acres. It's located at the southeast corner of I-75 and Fletcher Avenue, where it runs into Morrisbridge This is the first annexation in this immediate area, and as you can see, everything around it on the east side of 75 is in the unincorporated county. However, it abuts Tampa Oaks, which is in the City of Temple Terrace. There are two, I guess, two items that I think you should be aware of. One is that the, there are two parcels in between, you know, the area proposed to be annexed. That had an approval in the county earlier this year for either a hotel, office, and/or commercial, or 23 single-family attached or detached dwellings. Basically, it represents the maximum intensity of their SMU, which is the suburban mixed-use category, which permits up to six units per acre on an FAR of .35. However, that, those parcels have not petitioned to annex yet, but because it's in our service area, they will eventually need to annex. In looking at the rezoning application in the county, it is evident that the infrastructure, especially the Old Morrisbridge Road, is substandard. There will need to be, that roadway will need to be improved for any future development on Old Morrisbridge Road. And the other item that should be of concern is that this area is close, because Swiftmud owns most of the land to the east, and there is a bypass canal trail greenway plan that's on the city's transportation improvement plan that's also shared by Hillsborough County, because the plan actually runs pretty much the full length of the bypass canal. DRC, the Development Review Committee for the city, had no objections. The only thing that we should know is that this parcel straddles both the City of Tampa and the City of Temple Terrace service area, however, because Tampa's service area would be like a straight line going east along Fletcher. So, the City of Tampa has agreed that Temple Terrace would serve this area. So, with that, I believe the applicant is here, but staff recommends approval of this annexation.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move to comments from the general public, I believe. Clayton Burkemeier is here, and I guess you're the developer. I guess I got the name.
I'm representing, it's Clayton Burkemeier, 1304 South Soto Avenue, representing the applicant. I really don't have anything to add. This is sort of the first hearing of a series of hearings. We're going to have to do a conference of plan amendment to give us a designation, and we've got a rezoning that we're in the process of working on. So, really, this is just an introduction, and we support staff's recommendation of approval. We do have a team here for questions, if you want.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the public? Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
I have one other comment, please.
Okay.
There was an amendment to the ordinance that was made today. We would like to add the wording to the fifth whereas clause that says, whereas the applicant has acknowledged its obligations to enter into a development agreement with the city pursuant to section 12-422, Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, which will include, among other provisions, that the cost of worth and sewer extensions intended to serve the development planned for the subject property, and this is what we're adding, excluding the cost of any upsizing of utilities required to serve other projects in the area, will be paid entirely by the applicant. So, we just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
That was a request made by the applicant. Under the code, to the extent that there is, there are utility lines that need to be run to the property, the applicant must pay for the lines that will be run to the property that are necessary to service their property. To the extent that there is upsizing in lines to serve other properties that are not the applicant, then the code provides for a mechanism whereby there's a prorata where the applicant pays for the costs necessary to extend the lines to their property. So, that's something that Mr. Burkemeier had contacted Ms. Lynn and wanted clarification on, so that there isn't confusion down the line when we enter into a development agreement on that issue.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from council members?
No.
Councilmember Ross?
How much do we know about the homes that are proposed to be? I'm not sure who to address this to, Mr. Burkemeier or Noreen. How, can you describe the homes that are proposed to us?
I think, well, I can confer, but I would say, I mean, this is an annexation hearing, not a, I mean, I think that's, I don't think that's a fully formed idea, and I think that this is probably a premature, that's more of a discussion that we would be having at the zoning hearings that would be upcoming. And I don't know, Mr. Connolly, I think that's probably your take on it as well, but I think it would be speculation, right? Or do you want to speculate? So, yeah, I think we, I think we'll hold off. We're still kind of developing a rezoning plan. We haven't filed an application yet. This is sort of the first of however many hearings we're going to have, five or six hearings, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Understood. Understood.
Are there any other comments from council?
No.
If there are no other comments from council, I'll ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of three parcels of certain real property totaling 26.66 acres, lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County and located at the southeast corner of I-75 and Fletcher Avenue, Morris Bridge Road, within an address of 12305 Old Morris Bridge Road, legally described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part here of redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing a separability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you. The ordinance is acceptable. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Gorilich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Donahue. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. The ordinance has been approved and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, August 1st, 2017. Moving on to item E. This is a second public hearing and second reading adopting ordinance 1420 RZP 17-08 to amend the land development code. And are we going to read these all together?
What I would like to do is to do one presentation on all five ordinances, and then you can take them one at a time and adopt them, ask questions, and then adopt.
So, item E through I?
Yes, please.
You're going to present them all, and then we'll, then we'll each take one, every single one, one at a time?
Yes.
For opening
Okay.
The public hearing.
That way, anybody who is here, who's present, who has comments on any of the land development code changes would know that the time to come up is after Ms. Lynn makes her presentation on all of the proposed land development code changes.
And again, just for clarification, that's items E through I on our agenda.
Just make it for him.
Anybody? That's E through?
E through.
It's E through I.
E through I. Correct. And we're going to open the public hearing on that as she starts, and then we'll close it after we get all the discussion and everything.
All the discussion that anybody in the, in the public has on any of those proposed amendments.
Okay. Public hearing is now open on items E through I on the agenda.
Oh, here it is. Here it is.
Okay. Okay, the reason we have five ordinances is because they're different subject matters covering three chapters in the, in the Code of Ordinances. So, there are changes to chapter four, chapter eight, and chapter 12. Oh. Okay.
Okay. These are some of the changes that were made between the first hearing and this hearing. We inadvertently left off financial from the parking spaces, as noted in the slide. We also left off hotel motels parking. We are now recommending, well, we, we recommend one per room and one per employee space instead of one per room and half an employee, half of an employee space. So that's a change. Pardon me? Yeah? I don't know why it doesn't move. Okay. We also made some changes to the driveway section as a result of comments made at their first public hearing. What we tried to do in this language is to tighten up the, the border. So, as you can see, it says, if recycled or crushed asphalt or other loose material is used, it shall be packed in and rolled for compaction and stabilization to avoid overflow into the right-of-way. In addition, the border must be raised, decorative, and heavy-duty so as doing, to be anchored and fixed in place. Landscaping may be an exception to the, the uniform border requirement as long as it secures the driveway. So just to recap what the changes are, seventeen oh-eight related to the residential and health-related care facilities by adding the community residential homes and all those types of facilities that are mandated by state law, and also adds the reasonable accommodation on definition and process and revises the family definition. In seventeen oh-nine, which deals with the development processes, we updated and revised the development review process to include the general site plans, final site plan, plating, rezonings, better differentiation between the procedures like the PD and the conditional use. We deleted the special approval because it was so similar to the conditional use. We created a DRC administrative approval process just to take care of minor changes. We added a conceptual plan process, which the annexation that you just heard, you know, they probably will be using that conceptual plan process because of their circumstances. And we also moved the sign and buffer variances from the BOA to the, sorry, from the city council to the BOA. We, for the chapter twelve, we changed some definitions. We added some additions to accessory use, visibility triangle. We added the definition for tattoo parlors, which is a new use. Section twelve eight sixty-one, we expanded on the, the entire section for fences, walls, and, and hedges. It allows the finished side to face out unless facing a right-of-way. Added and revised fence standards, including diagrams in the, in the LEC. It applies to all properties and uses not just single-family, which is what the current code only deals with single-family, and also deals with landscaping location standards associated with fence or walls. And the off-street parking and driveway, we just spoke about the driveway change that we made. That also applies to all properties, not just single-family. We added and revised standards, including exceptions. For the residential zone property for access parking and drainage facilities, right now it only includes three districts, but it leaves off R seven and R nine. Well, the, the rezoning that you're dealing with later on tonight is, has used this, actually, they are rezoning their property because they're rezoning it to R, R seven point five, and the, the current code didn't allow for that expansion. So, this is just a fair way to include all single-family districts, to be allowed to have parking or drainage in association with an abutting commercial use like the PDQ that you'll hear later on. The parking lot and parking spaces, I just went over some of the changes that we made, and we added the bicycle parking. And, and then for the plant material, this was just an update of the, the reference year for the, for the plant material. For chapter four, there's just a, a change in the alcoholic beverages that regarding when property is zoned PD, it just, it just reverts back to the regulations for the rest of the code if you're in a PD, 'cause sometimes the PD doesn't actually address specifics on the alcoholic beverage. So that fixes that situation. And then for chapter eight, all it was is a typo from S, from S I T E to S I G H T. But we had, we had to do a whole ordinance because it was a different chapter. So with that, I think we are recommending approval of these changes, which we believe will be easier for staff to implement and easier to be administered for, hopefully, more and, you know, improved development in the city.
Thank you. This is a time for anyone to be heard on any of these items, items E through I on the agenda tonight. I have two requests to address, council. The first one is from Jack Ritter regarding item six I, fences and recycled asphalt, name and address. Please, you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, council. Mr. Attorney, Mr. City Manager, and obviously our illustrious clerk, Jack Ritter, two-two-seven, Willowick Avenue. The crushed asphalt thing is terrible. I can't imagine, even though Charles kind of supports it, I was in the construction business for thirteen years. It is just not a pretty thing for residential. Now, somebody like Frank has got a driveway that's a, what, hundred yards long or thereabouts? That may be an exception, but somebody like me that's got about forty yards of concrete, I wouldn't put it in my place. I have one across the street. It was put in in nineteen sixty-seven. It's not bordered, it's been repaired, what have you, and it looks like hell, to put it mildly. Doesn't fit, so we need to do away with that. Crushed asphalt is a recycled product. What happens if they scrape up all of this blue and yellow and white paint that they put on it, and they put it down in your driveway? Mrs. Donahue knows exactly what it looks like right up the street from her. Let's talk about these fences. Wooden fence, bad side out. If your neighbor doesn't have a fence, you now have a fight. Neighbor says, huh, I'm insulted. You wanna put the good side in, I understand that. Then go buy one of these PVC fences and put it up, and the neighbor's happy, you're happy. The problem we have with so many fences being put up backwards based on the current code is we don't inspect them after they're repaired or they're installed initially. I can point right in my neighborhood, a four. My daughter's facing one that's about eighty feet long, and it's up there backwards. I've got one that abuts my property, and I was away. I came back, and the guy was out there finishing up, and I said, you know this is backwards? He looks at me, he said, who the hell cares, other than you? I got more property than the neighbor. What can I do about it? The fence is up. Wonderful neighbor. We need to look carefully at what we're doing. We wanna be above the rest, not just like the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Thank you. Next is Jan Tumbleson. She would like to speak on item six I.
Good evening. I support all the changes that have been suggested for site development, and they do not delay progress of development in the city of Temple Terrace, except I have a problem with the fences. I want the fences, the smooth side out, because it looks a lot better than having the ugly side, as I call it, facing the road. Also, I would like to mention there are several intersections, and I want this to be cleared up in this ordinance regarding the site triangle, a clear site triangle. There is, when you go on fifty-second, I'm sorry, Fifty-third and Serena, that brick wall is, who is now on Woodmott School property, and Caroline and Druid Hills, the landscaping on Caroline Druid Hills, you cannot pull out safely. And on Serena, you have to keep inching up to see that you're not going to be hit by anyone because of the site triangle. So please clarify that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to these items? Pardon me, closing the public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on these items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed on items E through I. Do we wanna take council discussion all together, or on each individual one as we bring it up?
Considering you've got a vote on each one of them individually, having discussion on each one of them individually would make sense. That way, you could just move on to, from one to the next, to the next.
Okay. We'll take item E first. We've already had the public hearing. Staff provided us, is available for questions. Public comment is done. Public hearing is closed. Council discussion on item E, which is the ordinance fourteen twenty RZP seventeen oh-eight, mending the Land Development Code. Is there any council discussion on this item?
Yes.
Councilmember Donahue.
I went to the city of Tampa, and they say in their Land Development Code on fence and wall regulations that the property, in order to have the ugly side face your neighbor, all adjacent affected property owners have declared in writing that they have no objection to the exposed framing. Now, I, I can tell you that the first time I read this ordinance, and let me tell you what, if you want to spend a lot of time, read these ordinances, I, I would look up and say, what page am I on? Oh, my goodness, I'm only on eighteen of forty-six. So I applaud you, city planners. Thank you for, for all that. It was so small, but it was not mentioned at our meeting, and, and I think, like Mr. Ritter and Ms. Tumbleson, I, I completely missed it. What it says, it used to say, the finished side of any such wall or fence shall face out, period. And now that little tiny word "out" has been replaced by "any right-of-way." Well, that sounds great, except that, as Mr. Ritter pointed out, his yard is not part of a right-of-way, so now he comes home to find the working side of a fence. I, I'm not sure why we changed that. I mean, was there some public outcry as to, I can understand the, including the right-of-way?
If I could, if I could offer some explanation there?
Yeah, please.
If you remember, for the last twelve years, I've been your building official before I became your city manager. In those twelve years, there's been numerous, countless times where I have told somebody, here's a permit for your fence, but you have to put the finished side towards your neighbor. That runs into a lot of opposition for two reasons. One, the reason they're putting the fence up is to create that border. There's another fence next to it. It is impossible, from a construction standpoint, to put the fence up because the neighbor doesn't want the guy putting the fence up on his property. That's problematic. Two is, the, the, the argument that I've been getting here for the last twelve years is, if I'm buying the fence and doing the labor and the material to put it in, and this only pertains to one type fence, which is a board-on-board fence. When you do a shadow box, it doesn't affect it. When you do a PVC fence, it doesn't, it doesn't affect it at all. The problem that we've got is the board-on-board fence is very well-used and can be bought on the weekend at Home Depot in eight-foot panels. The argument, I, I don't know that I can provide anybody a good argument, is why are, why am I buying a fence and I get the bad side? Okay? I mean, that's, that's a, that's a tough, that's a tough explanation. We've been doing this for twelve years, I guarantee you. People, people are not real happy with the city when we say, oh, yeah, you can put, put the fence up, but you gotta put the finished side to your neighbor. That's problematic. Now, to clarify the right-of-way, if it's facing a right-of-way, meaning the front, the side, the corner, lot, you have to put the good side out. In other words, if we can see it from the right-of-way, we're protecting the right-of-way. All right? But somebody's backyard, side yards that you don't see from the right-of-way, what we're trying to do is allow the homeowner who is putting and paying for the fence to put the finished side to his property. Now, I know there's people that disagree with that, but I can't imagine that anybody sitting up here would agree with putting a fence up and paying the money for the fence and having the ugly side towards your property.
Let me tell you why. Because you're putting the fence up, you're actually inconveniencing your neighbor right now, putting a fence up. And when I put my fence up, I actually, I actually changed my fence to chain link because my neighbor's behind me. I went to them, I said, I'm gonna put a fence up. And they said, well, don't put a board-on-board up, 'cause you'll, quote, ruin my view. So I said, okay. So I put a chain link fence up. Okay? We've gotta start cooperating with each other. We're supposed to be Temple Terrace, supposed to be a neighborhood, not just some city. I, my, my other concern wasn't, you just talked about it, was, I don't wanna drive down any street, White Way, River Hills, Gillette, pick a street and see the bad side out facing the street, which you just solved that problem. Now, from, the other reason I would, if I were putting the fence up, I'd put the ugly side up to my side, because there's a good chance that I'm gonna put hangers on the post and put a ladder or a canoe or something hanging on the post. So there's, there's a practical reason for having the ugly side in your yard as well. So I, I, I'm, you know, I think we need to fix that. I think, I think that people need to discuss with their neighbors, and, you know, if, if my neighbor and I discuss, and I say, okay, put the, the ugly side to my side, which, which has happened, my neighbor just put a new fence up, and it was easier for him to put the, the good side towards his place, and I said, fine, because, then I put a canoe rack on it, okay? So, but we got it, I, I think it's, it's, to me, this particular fix on the fence is a Band-Aid that we don't need. And I think we gotta get people to start talking to each other, figuring out who the heck your neighbor is, and if they come to some agreement, who's gonna take the bad side, who's gonna take, quote, the good side, then so be it. But I don't think we should all of a sudden say that you're gonna just, I mean, that's just, to me, it's just rude, that you come home one day and you see the nasty side of the, it's not really, it's not that bad, okay? You see the bad side of fence facing your yard when you didn't, maybe you didn't even want the fence up to begin with. And that just adds insult to injury, and I think that we should, we should be having, forcing people to talk to each other, not just create a fix that, that some people have a problem with because they don't wanna talk to their neighbor, or because they can't stand their neighbor, or for whatever reason. So, I would be wholeheartedly in favor of putting that fence ordinance back to the way it was.
Thank you. Can I ask a question about that? In order to do, in order to make changes now, since this is a second reading, can we simply make the change, or should I or Mr. Pagorlitch make a motion to make that change?
So what you would, so, first of all, with regard to the ability of a municipality or county to make changes to an ordinance during the adoption process... to make changes to an ordinance during the adoption process, there's a Florida Supreme Court case called Newmont v. State from 2007 that discusses that so long as modifications along the way don't change the ordinance in such a way that the title of the ordinance is no longer an accurate title. I mean, because the whole point is to put the public on notice of what's being proposed to be considered by the city council at a meeting. So, you know, the general proposition, you need to make sure that you're not changing the intent, making major changes to the ordinance. It would make the title of the ordinance inaccurate, which, from what I understand, what you're talking about doing, at least to this one provision, is not making the change to the code and instead leaving the code as is with regard to the requirement to have the, which side the finished face of the fence would be. So, that would not require, that would not require restarting the process. It wouldn't require a new public hearing. But it would require a carefully crafted motion that would adopt the ordinance with certain amendments. So, it's absolutely clear what is being approved by the city council this evening.
I'd like to make that motion unless you're...
Go ahead and make, carefully craft that motion.
I'm going to see what I can do.
We'll make sure it gets amended correctly to the right way.
That's why I asked the question.
And then we can discuss a little further because I'm sure there's a couple other people who may want to...
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject something here. I thought we started on item E.
I was going to bring that up next. I'm not sure. I'm sure this pertains to item I.
Yeah, item I is what it affects us.
Item I is the one that gets the amendment.
That's what I thought.
I just want to make sure that we stay on track.
So, we'll get to that when we get to item I.
I apologize.
So, we kind of discussed item I. Was there any real, any discussion on item E?
Well, let me just ask a general question so we're not off the reservation again. I know Sherri's going to have something to say about the crushed asphalt. Which item is that before I start? Because I'm lost now.
Well, that's the problem is it's easy to get lost in here.
We have a trouble following where we are.
Yeah. I wish we had all those slides so that we could use them.
Lauren, do you know which item it is?
Is it E? Asphalt G?
I thought it was in E as well.
E is asphalt? No, I don't know that that's correct.
No, no, E is just usage.
E is the residential healthcare facilities and the...
It's not F.
It's going to be I.
It's going to be I?
It's in the same, they're together.
Okay, good.
Okay, so they're both in there. So, let's get back to item E, E, F, G, and H, which I don't think we have any discussion or changes on. And we'll take them one at a time. So, for item E, is there any further discussion on item E? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk to read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, identified as RZP 1708, providing for reasonable accommodation procedures, amending Chapter 12, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, adding Article 3 titled Reasonable Accommodation Procedures, and providing for residential and related healthcare facilities within all zoning districts except light industrial subject to additional standards and requirements, amending Chapter 12, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Land Development Code, Article 2, Section 12-40, titled Definitions, and the following sections of Article 7, Division 2, Section 12-225, titled R-10 Single Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-226, titled R-9 Single Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-227, titled R-7.5 Single Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-228, titled R-7 Single Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-229, titled R-MF Multi-Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-230, titled R-MFA Alternate Multi-Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-231, titled PDR Plan Development Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-232, titled E-I Educational Institutional Zoning Regulations, Section 12-233, titled CO Commercial Office Zoning Regulations, Section 12-234, titled CG Commercial General Zoning Regulations, Section 12-235, titled PD Plan Development Zoning Regulations, Section 12-238, titled A-U Agricultural Urban Zoning Regulations, and Section 12-259, titled Additional Uses, Sections 12-241 through 12-258, titled Reserved, creating Section 12-241, titled Specific Standards for Permitted Uses, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1420.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 1420.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay?
You said aye first.
Sorry, I'm in favor.
We jumped ahead to aye. So, you're in favor of, you voted yea for E. Okay, it's unanimous. All right, we're going to move on to item F, which is the second public hearing and second reading adopting ordinance 1421 RZP 17-09 to amend the Land Development Code. Is there any council discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk to go ahead and read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, identified as RZP 17-09, providing for changes to clarify, provide consistency and streamline the development processes by amending Chapter 12, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Land Development Code, Article 1, Section 12-8, titled Rules Regarding Implementation of New Standards, and Section 12-10, titled Waivers, amending the following sections of Article 3, Section 12-71, titled City Council, Section 12-72, titled Board of Adjustment, and Section 12-74, titled Development Review Committee, DRC, amending the following sections of Article 6, Section 12-158, titled Zoning Standards Deleting in Its Entirety, Section 12-159, titled Signs and Buffers, and amending Section 12-160 through 12-186, titled Reserved, amending the following sections of Article 7, Division 2, Section 12-188, titled Zoning Map, Section 12-193, titled Rezoning, and creating Section 12-194, titled Comprehensive Plan Amendment, amending Section 12-194 through 12-224, titled Reserved, amending Section 12-225, titled R-10 Single Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-26, titled R-9 Single Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-27, titled R-7.5 Single Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-228, titled R-7 Single Family Residential Zoning Regulations, Section 12-231, titled PDR Plan Development Residential Zoning Regulations, and Section 12-235, titled PD Plan Development Zoning Regulations, creating Section 12-241, titled Specific Uses and Standards for Permitted Uses, and amending Sections 12-241 through 12-258, titled Reserved, amending Article 7, Division 3, Section 12-259, titled Conditional Uses, amending the following sections of Article 8, titled Plating, Site Plans, Development Permits, and Other Approvals, amending Division 1, Section 12-330, titled Vacating, Discontinuing, Amending or Closing Streets, Alley's, Roads, Rights of Way and Easements, amending the following sections in Division 2, titled Plating, Section 12-351, titled Plating Required, Section 12-352, titled Optional Pre-Submission Conference, Section 12-354, titled Preliminary Plot Review, and Section 12-357, titled Plot Review, Final Plot Review, amending Division 3, titled Site Plans, Section 12-377, titled General Site Development Plans, deleting in its entirety, Section 12-378, titled Preliminary Site Plans, amending Section 12-379, titled Final Site Plans, amending Section 12-380, titled Deviations from the Site Plans, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1421. Move to approve ordinance 1421 RZP number 17-09 on second reading. There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Item G. Second public hearing and second reading adopting ordinance 1422 to amend Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, identified as RZP 1710, providing for minor changes to clarify, correct, and update information by amending Chapter 4, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 4-6, titled Zoning Districts and Locations Where Sale of Alcoholic Beverages permitted, Distance Requirements, Providing a Severability Clause effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Is there, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance 1422 to amend Chapter 4 of the Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances.
Move to approve ordinance 1422 RZP number 1710 to amend Chapter 4 upon second reading.
Is motion, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Donahue. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. It is approved. We're going to move to item number H, which is second public hearing and second reading adopting ordinance 1423 RZP 17-10 to amend Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk to go ahead and read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, identified as RZP 1710, providing for minor changes to clarify, correct, and update information by amending Chapter 8, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Building and Fire Prevention, Section 8-166, titled Minimum Standards, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1422 RZP 17-10.
Motion to approve ordinance 1423 RZP 17-10.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I believe we're moving on to item I.
Oh, boy.
All right. Council discussion.
Okay, I think we've, if you don't mind, we've talked about fences. Can we talk about asphalt here? Okay. I agree with Mr. Ritter wholeheartedly. If you have a long driveway, it changes completely the look than if someone who has the standard driveway in a neighborhood where all other driveways are either consistently of poured concrete or some other material that is not going to move. And I know it says packed, you know, compacted and all that, but seeing firsthand what it looked like in a neighborhood and how hideous it was, I was surprised to find out that it was listed as ever as an available. And that's why I brought it up probably nine, 10 months ago. Now, that neighbor has since removed every bit of that and at great expense has put down pavers, which I'm sure has increased his property value immensely. So, I have to question why we continue to leave. I know we tried to mitigate it somewhat by saying that it would have a, you know, a uniform border and all of that. So, and I have not carefully crafted a motion to change that. So, it would require removing the word altogether, which may change the ordinance. I'm not sure on that one. But it is upsetting to know that if someone calls in and says, hey, can I put down crushed asphalt? We just say, it's a simple yes, which is what happened to my neighbor. He got that advice because it said he could do it. Well, then he just didn't do it right, unfortunately for the poor guy. Like I say, it was expensive for him.
You've got to do it right. And I think maybe that's, you know, something we could train the people to answer the phone because you just, you said it yourself. If it's a long driveway, it looks okay. If it's a short driveway, if it's not done right, it looks horrible. So, I don't know that we want to ban it entirely. But at the same time, I think there has to be some consideration once again for your neighbors, okay? God forbid we think about our neighbors. That it's done right and it's fitting in with the color and feel of the neighborhood. I think Charles and their team have attempted to try to tighten that up.
And they did, and they did.
I just, you know, I don't know how big of a problem it is, first of all. I mean, there are a lot of people trying to put crushed asphalt driveways in.
We haven't seen that many. I can't say that we've had maybe a couple.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we've got grandfathered...
It's one of those suitable materials that you can buy along with the shell, the shell mix. You can buy it along with the pea gravel and the three-quarter inch, you know, rocks and so forth. I mean, if you want to totally prohibit the material, I would imagine you can do that.
Well, I don't know you need to. I mean, I think when it's done right, it's okay. It's just that people don't, you know, they throw it down and then they walk away. And that's where the problem comes in. And you've got to have the right base for it. You've got to have, you've got to get rolled, you've got to get compacted, you've got to have the right border. And I think, you know, maybe rather than trying to change the wording of the ordinance, we let our inspectors know that if someone comes in, you know they're going to put down a, you know, crushed asphalt driveway that they have some communication with the owner so they know what's expected of them when it's put down.
Well, we've tried to write the order so that it allows the product and yet contains some of the design, so.
Well, on that note, when my neighbor came in, I hate to make this so personal, but I have firsthand knowledge. Apparently, he came in, he saw that he could use that product, and so therefore, he mapped out his driveway to his needs as opposed to what was allowed. So, I mean, he really went over and above, got really close to trees and, you know, so there wasn't much oversight. And according to him, he asked and they said, yeah, no problem. Again, this is just...
Yeah, I don't know that that's totally accurate.
Well, and probably not, but you know...
It is, you know, we answer questions at the building permit desk, basically the questions that's asked.
Oh, I know.
And I don't know that it has ever been established that he says, we're going to put a crushed asphalt driveway down. He wanted to put a pervious hard surface down. At that point, crushed asphalt would be considered as a pervious hard surface, so.
Well, perhaps the word...
I don't know that the building department was given the entire story about what this guy was doing. And then obviously, he went and did it.
Absolutely, yeah. I agree.
Sort of very discombobulated on how he put it in. So, it kind of compounded the problem.
Well, I think he totally misunderstood. So, and obviously, we'll give him the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, and he's gone from crushed asphalt down to pretty pavers.
Maybe what we need to know is anytime somebody uses the words crushed asphalt, a light goes off somewhere. And everybody says, oh, let's talk to them and get more detail.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And we can certainly put some checks and balances in place with staff at the permit, you know, the permit desk that we can direct them a little bit more.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Well...
Councilmember Ross, and then I just have one quick comment on both the items.
No, go ahead. I just want to say, I can't think of a time in Temple Terrace when we would need crushed asphalt. I just, I would be in favor of just not permitting this. I mean, it might be a burden to one or two people over a period of five or six years, but that's the price of living in Temple Terrace. I would like to not use this product.
One suggestion is you could put that distant requirement, you know, to only allow it when the driveway is a certain distance or more.
Well, they can get a variance too. And the same thing comes to mind on the fences. If there's a physical barrier, like another fence, and they can't do this, then they get, or their neighbor won't let them into the yard to nail the boards on, they get a variance. And I think those are good grounds for variances. Or if there's a driveway that's half a mile long and it's in a secluded area of the city, those are all good grounds for variances. But as a rule, I think 99% of our city, their houses right next door to each other, and I don't think crushed asphalt's appropriate.
Good point. Yeah, I'm going to agree with Councilmember Ross on that also. I'll just say one thing.
And I'll just say one thing, it, it does have its place for certain purposes, obviously as we expand and, and grow a little bit, since this does apply to businesses too. We've taken a lot of places in on three oh one, which the crushed asphalt may be appropriate, so it's not right to totally ban it because it applies to both residential and businesses and everything else. Yes, you obviously have to pay attention to your neighbors and sometimes we don't. And this is the same thing with the fence. I, I just can't even imagine putting the backside of my fence out to someone else when I'm putting up a fence. I think that's a standard everywhere. And I, I understand there are some technical issues if you have neighbor problems with putting fences up, but I, I can't agree with allowing the backside of a fence to go out. I would disagree with that, so... I don't know how we have to craft it or word it or just keep it the way it is and then it's life variances.
Can we table this or can we just table this and have it come back up or...
Well, you don't have to take action on the land development, on this, on this ordinance tonight. You could, you could continue the public hearing to another, to the next city council meeting and to, to provide time on it. I mean, the, the changes that we're talking about, I'm, I'm looking at the code right now, they're fairly simple. I mean, to, to address the issue with the fence, you just leave it as is where the, where the code says the fence faces out and you don't include the proposed change, if that's what you want to do on that. On this, the, the debate that you're having now is on the proposed change to section nine, excuse me, twelve-nine-twenty-one. And what, under subpart B, it begins, "With all driveways installed, altered, changed, replaced, or extended after the effective date of this ordinance shall require a building permit and shall meet the following requirements." And there's language in the first subsection under B that includes or other similar hard surface material. And I don't know if that language was in there specifically to allow for the loose gravel. But if it was, then you could delete out those words that I, that I just read. And then in the next subsection, it, the new verbiage says, "If recycled or crushed asphalt or other loose material is used, it shall be packed in and rolled for compaction, stabilization, and so on and so forth." So, you could, if, if the notion is not to include crushed asphalt, you would want to delete crushed asphalt other, under that subsection. And if the words or other similar hard surface material was included specifically to allow for crushed asphalt, you'd want to delete that out as well.
I'd be in favor of that. I just...
So, just to clarify now, because we seem to all be in semi-agreement on making some changes there, would be to continue the public hearing or just delete, just delete them right now?
You, you, you don't have to continue the public hearing.
Okay.
That's what I was explaining earlier, is that to the extent that you're making these minor modifications to the land development code based upon issues that are coming up tonight, you can make these changes and my, that's why I said it, you want to be very careful about how you articulate precisely what changes there are because we're gonna be adopting it with those proposed changes. And so, so getting back to it, if you want to leave the fences as is, I think the, the modification to the proposed ordinance would be to section twelve hyphen eight sixty-one E three, where you leave, leave it so that the fences face out and that you do not adopt the proposed new verbiage that set forth in the ordinance that was included in your agenda. If you want to exclude the crushed asphalt from an option in twelve hyphen nine twenty-one, then you would delete or other similar hard surface material from subpart B. And then you would also exclude or delete crushed asphalt from twelve-nine-twenty-one B. But I, and I say or other similar hard surface because I, I don't know if that was put in there specifically to allow for crushed asphalt. If it was, then I would delete those words.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross.
If we're done with fences and asphalt, I have another question about this section and that concerns tattoo parlors. And I read in the minutes, Mr. Conley, where you said there's, there's been some case law that has struck down as unconstitutional prohibitions on tattoo parlors.
That's correct.
My, my question is, is that a court that is binding on this circuit?
It is, yes.
Which, which court was it?
It's a, I think there's multiple jurisdictions. I think the fourth DCA is the one that rendered the, rendered the opinion. But in, in essence, tattoo parlors are found, have been found to be something protected under the First Amendment to that you can't, you can't simply ban outright from a jurisdiction. So, you've got to allow them and place certain reasonable regulations on them. And, Mr. Ross, I can be happy to send the, the case law to you.
That's all right. I, I believe you. I was just wondering if it was a court that had, that was binding.
It, it is.
The fourth DCA is not binding on us.
Oh, it, it is unless the second, if you have a jurisdiction, if you, the law in Florida is this, if you have a DCA that renders an opinion on something and your jurisdiction does not have a different opinion. So, if we had a second DCA opinion that was different, then it wouldn't be binding on us. But the second DCA has not rendered a different opinion. So, to the extent that a DCA renders an opinion on something like that, it's binding throughout the state unless and until a separate DCA renders something different, in which case you have conflicting case law and that would go, potentially go to the Supreme Court for them to make a determination.
So, Plant Cities in the same boat as we are because they had a prohibition also.
Yeah, all, all jurisdictions in Florida based upon the case law should have some ability for tattoo parlors to operate within the jurisdictional limits and you can impose reasonable regulations on them being able to do so. And where they, where they go, et cetera. And my understanding is that's what city staff prepared in the ordinance that's in front of you.
So, Ms. Lynn, armed with that information, where, I, I don't know each zoning category, where would they be permitted to go under this proposal?
I think we made them a conditional use in CG, commercial general, which would be, you know, they strip commercial areas and they would have to come to you.
Well, yeah, but if it fits the CG requirements, we don't have any grounds for saying no.
Well, we also had five hundred foot distance requirement or one per block, whichever is greater, I think is what we put in. No, but a conditional use comes before you for approval. They don't just, it's not the permitted by...
Right, but we can't just arbitrarily deny them because we don't want them either. If they fit the zoning, we...
No, but, but there's criteria in the conditional uses that you have to meet. So, you don't have to approve it.
Is there a more restrictive way that we could put them in a more restrictive zoning category?
Well, the only other district we have is industrial, but the only, the only areas that are industrial is the US three oh one industrial park, which is...
That's a perfect place.
Which is far removed from the rest of the population here.
All right, well, I guess we've come to the point, City Manager Charles says.
If I could just cut up, Mr. Mayor, get some clarification. We've jumped around here again. We're going to, it's council's desire to prohibit crushed asphalt. Is that correct?
I haven't spoken yet, but when I get a chance, then maybe...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You know, again, we've got some other material that I need to make sure that you guys are okay with. It is loose-packed or compactable, such as three-quarter inch gravel, granite, you've got shell base, you've got some screening. There, there's, there's a whole list of material like this that is available to the public and it doesn't matter to us, I just need to make sure that we have some clarification on what you want, what you don't want, so that we follow suit with that. So, what I'm hearing is, is if you don't want crushed asphalt, shell base and other rock is okay, river rock, so on and so forth.
That's permitted now.
Asphalt.
Yeah, well, so is that, so is crushed asphalt. So, I mean, if we want to get rid of crushed asphalt, that's just, I need to know that. I mean, we, we need to act appropriately here.
Councilmember Chalora.
Thank you. I just caution you that the reason the asphalt and similar products came into play is many years ago when the city came up with the ordinance that you cannot park on the grass. Joe Gross was the one that said, well, we have to provide some kind of surface. And instead of people putting in these big driveways, and I don't have any asphalt in my house, but people putting in big driveways which are not impervious is gonna create all this water to run off to your neighbor, wherever it's gonna run off if you put a driveway there. The asphalt is impervious, but you have to look at, are you doing asphalt? There's crushed concrete, there's... Shell. Asphalt, shell, lime rock, whatever you want to call it. And folks that currently have it, are they gonna be required, are they grandfathered in? And if you currently have it, let me give you an example. Woodmont Clubhouse, they have crushed asphalt, shell, whatever you want to call it out there, and dirt. And if they want to come in and put new product down, they can't do that. Are they supposed to put concrete down to do all that, which is be a major expenditure? So, I'm just cautioning you all, be careful what you do because there may be much bigger consequences that are borne by this. But the reason this came up was many years ago when we said, everybody's parking their front yards. Let's eliminate that. And they said, well, there's gonna be designated areas and those areas have to be managed with some kind of surface, mulch, gravel. And, and Joe Gross came up with the, well, let's do some crushed asphalt. Crushed concrete's even worse because it creates dust, same product, just creates dust. And you have the lime rock. So, just having a little history on it, I just caution you, I mean, if you guys want to go there, it's, it's a decision you'll make, but how do you handle people that currently have it? And if they want to resurface their driveway, what do they do? Tell them you can't do it? Woodmont's a perfect example. And there's other people in the city that have that as well. So, you may be opening up a can of worms that, you know, I, I can go either way on it, I don't have a set. I'm just looking at what some of the consequences can be. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Chalora.
Well, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, and Bob, you said it yourself, was we've got some commercial uses that we're all saying, go ahead and put it there, just don't do a whole driveway with it. But, and that's what I'm saying, I don't think it's a huge problem. I think education is the way to go, that, you know, your neighbor's a perfect example. He just thought he could do it, he threw it down, it looked like crap, everybody complained, he took it out, he put pavers down. Tough lesson to learn, no question about it, but lesson learned. Okay? There was a couple other places around town that I, that I guess, there's areas of the city where these people have mishmacks. They take clay pots that they're not using anymore, they throw it in their driveway. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, Temple Terrace is not just where we live, it's, it's everywhere. It's, and there's a mixed use of product out there that I don't want to start creating criminals because we don't want to put crushed asphalt down. I don't, you know, I would never do it. I don't think anybody on my, none of my neighbors would ever do it. It just doesn't fit. So, I think maybe if we can educate somebody that comes in and says, well, I'm just gonna put crushed asphalt down. Now, there are times, depending on the economy, where that's the cheapest way to go, okay? We're not there right now, okay? All building materials are going up. And it might be the fastest way to go. Or if they do, I mean, there's, right on Ridgedale, there's that, that house on the corner that put the little pavers in for the little pickup truck. If they put crushed asphalt there, I don't think anybody would care, okay? It just, it's because it's so small an area. So, it's, the material itself is not bad, it's the application of the material. And I think if, rather than we just ban it, that we ask our folks down at the city to work with people when they, somebody comes in and says, I'm gonna put, you know, impervious, what are you putting down? I'm gonna put shell. Okay, what do you know, blah, blah, blah. And by the way, you should wash, you get wash shell, don't, there's a, there's a lawsuit out there right now where somebody puts shell down that wasn't washed and it stinks, okay? It stinks really bad. And the birds are trying to get the clams out of the, whatever. And so, so you gotta be careful of that too. But I, I don't, it's, it's not a material problem per se, I think it's an education problem. And I don't want to just say it's banned because there's, there are certain situations where that is the best product for that particular use, whether it be in an industrial park or it be a small section, and it's a lot cheaper to do that than have a concrete truck come in or the, and you can't, or you can't find crushed as, uh, concrete or you can't find lime rock because they're building so many roads everywhere else. So, again, I think we just, I concur with, with Mr. Chalora that it's just caution. And Woodmont's a perfect example, they've got a mix of everything out there, dirt, shell...
Mostly dirt.
Mostly dirt, shell, crushed asphalt.
Yeah.
So, and I don't think anybody here would want, if that was the most cost-efficient way for them to put a new driveway down, I don't think anybody here would want to stop them. Mr. Mayor, if I, when somebody comes in, they want to do hard surface or whatever you want to call it, do they have to get a permit? You can't just get a truckload of asphalt and pour it in your yard, or can you? What, how does that work?
They're not supposed to.
Okay, well, you're supposed to have a permit to do it properly, right?
If, 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 again, if we're going to put some control on the design and the, the border and the compaction and the whole nine yards, we probably ought to be permitting every single bit of it, even if they're doing a hundred square feet. Now, our current code, if you do, and I think it's less than a hundred square feet of driveway, we consider that more of a maintenance than it is a brand-new driveway. That's not very much, it's ten by ten.
That's ten by ten. That's nothing, yeah.
It's nothing. So, we don't require people to get a permit if in fact they're doing maintenance, but we consider maintenance on a driveway.
My, my only suggestion for consideration is if you all would consider having some sort of structure to the permit process where people can't just come in and dump it. I'll give you an example, gaspers in the back, it's all asphalt, shell, but he had to do that for his drainage system because the water perks, or else he wouldn't be able to do that. So, there's, sometimes there's multiple purposes of doing it, but if on the front end, it's installed properly where it's not invasive to the people next door, it may be well-served, that, you know, I, just thinking ahead, that's all. Just trying to make it so it can work for people, people that currently have it, that want to put a new coating down. You know, that's Woodmont. Say they come in one day, say, you know, this, this wash shell's really bad, what do we do? Well, you can't use asphalt anymore or shell. Then they're gonna be coming to us saying, can we have a hundred thousand dollars for a new driveway? But I'm, th- those are examples, I mean, I don't want to pick on them, but that's the only one that came to my mind. And I'm sure there's others in the city. And I agree, I wouldn't want some person right next to my house putting asphalt everywhere so as they're approaching, it looks like, you know, you're at the farm. I have asphalt, crushed asphalt on my farm. I just don't have any at, at my house. But there's, there's a right place for it as long as it's done properly.
Exactly.
So, just, just, just maybe some suggestion for consideration is if in fact you have to permit to do that, maybe some structure can be put in place so it could be done in a, in a managed fashion where it's not invasive to the neighbors.
Your second. Councilmember Ross.
Mr. Mayor, maybe it'd be wise for us to extend this after all and give Charles a chance to, maybe there's a way we can work this into certain, if your zoning is this or if you're existing or what, there's, I, I think there's some room to do something here where we can satisfy some of the concerns that have been raised that are legitimate, while at the same time, maybe looking at some of the things that Mr. Chalora correctly pointed out. I, I don't know that we're gonna get to the bottom of the asphalt. I think we have some consensus on the fence issue and the tattoo parlors, we don't have a choice. But the, but the asphalt, I, I just have a feeling if we, I don't know, maybe you feel differently, but I think...
Well, out of the first reading that we went through this discussion and, and you weren't here and per the concerns of Ms. Donahue, you did write and, and if we go down to, part of the addition that we've added in here is to create a uniform border to create a neat and orderly appearance. We put some criteria in here to control the installation, okay? If recycled, and it says specifically, if recycled crushed asphalt or other loose material is used, it should be packed in, rolled in, for compaction, stabilized, to avoid overflow into the right of way. In addition, the border must be raised, decorative, heavy duty. So, we tried to address the bordering and the containment of the material and not only, again, without limiting or prohibiting the use of the asphalt. So, I, I don't know if that's not sufficient. I mean, we can go back to the drawing board. But we tried to, again, in the, in the, to create a uniform border.
Can't hear you, Charles.
I'm sorry. We tried in the, in the ordinance revision to create a uniform border of such so that we had at least some containment unlike what we had on Lynde Avenue. So, I, whatever council wishes to do, I mean, we just, we just need to kind of move forward, I think, so... I think, so.
I, I think after hearing every point, what everybody has to say about the material, it, it apparently was not the material as much as the application. And therefore, if everyone understands that any change to the original driveway has to be permitted, then what occurred in that particular driveway would not have been so egregious to the neighborhood because it, it was like three quarters of his yard. So it wasn't just a driveway, I mean, this thing was like basically the yard, it was just a few patches left of greenery. So, I mean, that, and tha- and that's what, that's really what caused the uproar. I mean, I'm not in favor of crushed asphalt, I think it's ugly after seeing it firsthand. I, I would love for that part, that word to be removed, if we could just take that. I mean, I understand other crushed surfaces are, are um, material is, is probably necessary because, like you say, you don't want all poured concrete all over the place, that, that's even worse. So if there's a simple way to just leave this in place and remove the words asphalt, then I, I think that might solve the problem without.
But there's also situations where asphalt's the right thing. So I don't think removing the word asphalt is the answer. My suggestion was going to be that we fix the fence language, I think we all agree on that.
Yeah, we agree on that one.
Okay, that you got to have the nice side facing your neighbor, that's just ridiculous. Is there a way, Charles, to tighten up the permit process and the inspection process to ensure that when somebody goes to do a driveway, that if they're doing something, I mean, I agree with you, ten by ten, I, you know, first, if somebody's got a concrete driveway and they decide to make ten by ten of it asphalt, I think that's a different problem, but is there a way to tighten up the inspection and, and I'm, and believe me, whoever's listening, I'm not a big fan of, of more government intervention, but is there a way to um tighten up the, the inspection and permit process for driveways to ensure that if somebody is putting down asphalt on a driveway, that it's done properly and in keeping with, you know, I, I don't know how you do this, but maybe discuss with them, well, you know, none of your neighbors have asphalt, we can, you know, crushed concrete might be better or whatever. Or if they're going to stick with, if they, if they're adamant because their brother-in-law's got a truckload of free asphalt for him, that it's put down in a way that's not going too low with the property values of their neighbors.
And that's what the intent of this, this revision here is, is to make sure that it's a uniform border, it's a consistent border, and it's rolled in and it's not just loosely put in. So, um, I mean, we can re, we can, we can amend, um, certainly what we've got written here to prohibit crushed asphalt, um, having asphalt driveways is a whole different thing.
I don't think we want to do that because there's, there's commercial applications where it's, it's the best product.
Well, then I suggest what we do is to leave the ordinance like it is. It calls for a certain installation criteria, and we will work with the building department to come up with a solution to monitor and to, to, to make sure that
That's fine.
We address it specifically if somebody, and we need to ask the right questions. You putting crushed stone down.
Yeah.
Right? There's a big difference between crushed stone.
Yes.
Crushed concrete, crushed asphalt.
There is.
Okay? So we can modify our permitting, I guess, to ask a few specific questions so that we know upfront what they're putting down.
There you go.
Right, and percentage of yard and all that stuff.
Well, the percent, yeah, we, we do that regardless of whatever, even if they're putting impervious surface down, we still go through that.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah, I think we have the asphalt covered.
Yes.
I think so.
Now we have to correct the issue with fences.
I'm ready.
So that motion has to come there.
I'm waiting.
And we have to have the city clerk read it.
Oh, okay.
So, but we have to.
Okay.
You have to read it first or you have to modify it first?
Just read it first and we modify it first.
We want to, we want to make a, a motion that would, we want to craft a motion.
Carefully craft, carefully craft.
Okay, can I try?
That specifically indicates what we're adopting, so that to the extent that there is a change that's being made to the ordinance that you have in your package, that, that we clearly articulate precisely what change is being made so that upon adoption, when the city clerk goes to have this codified, that when we present it to municipal code, we know exactly what we're doing and how it's, how it's going to read.
Okay.
You can give it a shot.
I'm going to give it a shot, I don't know how crafted, well crafted it is. I just want to go on record as I asked for a workshop on this, and everybody said, oh, just read the ordinance.
You just had it. You just had it.
I just had it tonight, unfortunately. Okay. Yes?
I thought we did that already.
I closed them all.
Okay.
Right away, in the beginning.
Yeah, it's been closed.
Okay, so are you ready for me to try this?
Yes.
I move to delete the proposed change to RZP number seventeen dash ten, chapter twelve, land development code, section twelve dash eight sixty-one, from any right away, right of way, and leave the original ordinance in place so that it still reads, "The finished side of any such wall or fence shall face out," period.
There's a motion.
Do I do it?
Do I have a second? If that motion is good.
That carefully crafted?
If the motion is good, I just want to clarify that the code section is twelve eight sixty-one E three, and otherwise with the modification that Ms. Donahue has made a motion to approve the ordinance on second reading with that modification.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? Throw down a motion, then the city clerk will read it. Any all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Right now, the city clerk will read the title of the ordinance, and we'll vote on the title of the ordinance.
You'll, you'll approve it.
They'll approve the title of the ordinance after second reading. Okay.
So is the, is this language staying the same that's in the title?
The, the title is going to, the title will remain the same.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, identified as RZP seventeen ten, providing for minor changes to clarify, correct, and update information by amending chapter twelve, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Land Development Code, Article two, section twelve dash forty, titled definitions, amending Article seven, division two, section twelve dash two, three, four, titled Commercial General Zoning Regulations, and section twelve dash two, three, seven, titled Light Industrial Zoning Regulations, creating section twelve dash two, four, one, titled Specific Uses, and Standard Permitted Uses, and amending section twelve dash two, four, one through twelve dash two, five, eight, titled Reserved, amending division three, section twelve dash two, five, nine, titled Conditional Uses, amending Article nine, division eleven, section twelve dash eight, six, one, titled Fences, Walls, and Hedges, amending division thirteen, section twelve dash nine, two, one, titled Off-Street Parking and Driveway Requirements, and section twelve dash nine, two, three, titled Use of Residentially Zoned Property for Parking, Access, or Drainage Facilities, amending division fourteen, section twelve dash nine, five, seven, titled Design and Construction Standards for Parking Lots, amending division seventeen, section twelve dash one, zero, four, three, titled Plant Material and Design, Providing a Severability Clause Effective Date, and Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With.
Thank you. All, entertain the uh, motion to adopt ordinance. So moved.
Well, as amended.
So moved, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, saying nay. Motion is carried. Moving on to item number J. This is a second public hearing and second reading, adopting ordinance one, four, two, five, RZP seventeen dash zero, one, rezoning of seven, one, one, seven, oh, nine, North Fifty First Street from R nine to R seven point five, public hearing is open. And staff will provide a brief summary, and it will be available for questions.
Yes, so this is the second hearing, um, it involves the PDQ project at the corner of fifty-first and Fowler. I believe a preliminary site plan of the new PDQ, PDQ project was presented, preliminary site plan, um, at the last meeting. And the reason for this rezoning is that um, the single family lot immediately north is being rezoned to accommodate the drainage facility on the south side of that lot. So if this rezoning goes through, um, they will split the lot, and Mrs. Ward, the property owner, um, will keep her house on the north side, and then the south side will be used for the drainage facility. I think the applicant is here, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing Mr. Peter Sensa from the Avid Group, the applicants here, would you like to address counsel?
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Peter Pensah, AICP certified planner with Avid Group, where the planners and engineers on the project. I'll keep it brief because it's been a long night. The, the property that we're talking about is a hundred and fifty-seven foot wide, it's essentially two lots together, there's two, uh, there's two structures on the property. Uh, I'm the representative for the property owner, Ms. Ward, as well as the developer of the six parcels that are three in the City of Temple Terrace, three in the City of Tampa, which you're well aware of from last meeting. This application is for you is the rezoning because as you adopted earlier tonight, only certain zoning districts allowed uh for ancillary support uses like retention ponds and landscape buffers, which is what this project is. And you saw what that site plan was, and then it'd be binding by the PD plan from Tampa, and your, ultimately your final site plan approval as well. So with that, Ms. Ms. Ward's property will be remaining the north eighty-two foot as her residence, the south seventy-five foot uh will be retention pond and stormwater to support the overall project. And uh, you know, it's, the zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan as staff and the planning commission have, have pointed out in their analysis, and I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and council discussion.
I drove the property, and I can see where it will not cause any problem in the neighborhood.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning zero point eight zero acres of property located on the east side of North Fifty First Street, approximately two hundred and forty feet north of East Fowler Avenue, with an addressable location of one, one, seven, oh, nine, North Fifty First Street, from zoning classification R dash nine, residential nine, to R dash seven point five, residential seven point five, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing a severability clause effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with.
If it's acceptable, entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I move to approve rezoning one, one, seven, oh, nine, North Fifty First Street from R nine to R dash seven point five.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Move on to item K, which is going to be a second public hearing and second reading, adopting ordinance fourteen, twenty-six, to amend chapter twenty-two of the Code of Ordinances, wireless facilities, and public right of way. I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney who's going to give us a brief summary of uh what's going on with this uh, item K.
So um, item K is a, a comprehensive ordinance that's intended to regulate the use of, of rights of way within the City of Temple Terrace that was prepared as a result of House Bill six eighty-seven, which was uh, you know, adopted by the Florida Legislature in this past legislative session, in which I believe was uh, signed by the governor just a few days before July one, which is the effective date of the, of the ordinance. So this is something that has been on radar screens of municipalities for a number of months that this, uh, you know, that there's a heavy lobbying that was being done to open up rights of way. I attended a seminar of the uh, local government section of the Florida bar about three months ago, where an attorney, Tom Cloud, made a presentation to local government attorneys generally about rights of way and the use of rights of way and the upcoming legislation. Ken Buckman at Plant City retained Mr. Cloud to assist Plant City in drafting an ordinance to implement the regulations under House Bill six eighty-seven. I obtained the draft ordinance from Mr. Buckman uh, sure, just about the same time that he received it from Mr. Cloud, and Ms. Lynn and I had been, you know, we had been working on a draft ordinance, and frankly, what Mr. Cloud put together was more comprehensive than what we were, than what we were working on. So I made modifications to the ordinance um, that I received from Plant City that was prepared by Tom Cloud. And by the way, many jurisdictions in the state have retained Mr. Cloud to draft their ordinances for them as well. So division one of the ordinance is something that's entirely new, that provides general regulation and, and the requirements relating to the issuance of permits for any work to be done in rights of way, so that doesn't apply just to wireless providers, that, that applies to anybody that wants to do something in the City of Temple Terrace right of way. Division two is the one that specifically was prepared to address House Bill, House Bill six eighty-seven. So one of the unique features of section three thirty-seven point four zero one of the Florida statutes, which this is being codified under, is it requires notification to the Florida Secretary of State prior to adoption of the ordinance. That's something that's unique here. So there was a first reading that was held back in June, but the notice to the Secretary of State didn't take place until July fifth, and then it was actually published uh on the Secretary of State website, if, if that's an accurate description, until uh, July twelfth. The nice thing about the statutory requirement that requires that notice is that if you adopt an ordinance and it doesn't comply with that notice requirements, it's not rendered invalid. That being, the ca, that being said, the whole point behind providing that notice is to allow wireless companies to review ordinances and provide comments. So in this case, as my message to you earlier today indicates, Unity Fiber provided a letter to me, I think I received at the beginning of last week, where they saw the draft ordinance, and they had previously met with city staff to talk about regulation of rights of way, but they read the draft ordinance and they raised a number of objections to it, arguing that violated both Florida law and federal law. And one of the unique things about, you know, these uh, regulation of communications companies, you have at least two or three different federal laws that apply, um, in addition to state law. Upon receipt of the letter, I uh, wrote back to the folks at Unity, set up a conference call with them on Wednesday, we spent about an hour or so on the phone. They raised a number of issues, some of which I thought were uh, reasonable issues for consideration. I asked for them to draft a proposal back to, to the city, so we could see precisely what they were objecting to. They provided that to me late Friday afternoon, and then yesterday, Lorraine, Lynn, and I were on the phone uh, late afternoon discussing the proposals that were provided by Unity. In the draft that you have, in the draft that you received from me today at noon, that draft included um, at least a handful of proposal, proposed changes that were based upon issues that were raised by Unity Fiber. Some of them were just uh, simple clarification, like in the definitional section, making sure that we had capital letters in a particular definition. But they also indicated that for things such as being required to move a facility once it's, it's put in place, they asked for ninety days to move it instead of thirty days. Ms. Lynn and I discussed it and thought that sixty days was a reasonable compromise on that. They also objected to the language that simply indicated moving for a public convenience, and asked for something that was, that was a little more concrete that would provide for the ti, when the city would require for a facility to be moved. So I included language in there that, that indicated it would be reasonably necessary to accommodate a municipal purpose, including the, the convenient use of the, of the right of way by the public. Doesn't really put an onerous burden on the city, but just, you know, it's, it's a reasonable municipal purpose that is providing the basis to ask for them to, to move it. So I sent a modified ordinance to you at noon, and then early this afternoon, I spoke with Ken Buckman at Plant City, really the purpose of the call was to ask him to what extent any wireless providers had objected to their ordinance because theirs is so similar to the one that Temple Terrace had drafted. They didn't receive any objections, but he did advise me that based upon further consideration by Tom Cloud, that they were making additional by Tom Cloud, that they were making additional revisions to their ordinance. He sent it over to me, and I reviewed it, and I thought that many, not all, but many of the revisions were appropriate for Temple Terrace, and added clarification. And one new subsection, B-20 in 12, I think it's 362, provided an additional level of authority for cities to, for the city to reserve a section of a right-of-way for a municipal purpose if there was some anticipated use for it, which made sense. So what I sent to you mid-afternoon, or I guess it was late afternoon, was a revision that included both the revisions that I'd sent to you at noon today, as well as additional revisions based upon the changes that Plant City is making to their ordinance based upon the recommendation of Tom Cloud. So what, and just coincidentally, at the same time that I hit send on the revision to you, I received an email message from an attorney for Unity asking me for the most current version of the city's draft ordinance. So I sent it to Unity today shortly after I sent it to you. I spoke with representatives of Unity who are here to ask them their thoughts on the ordinance, because they advised that, well, they advised that they had no intention to come up and speak at the public hearing this evening. But generally speaking, they found the ordinance as revised with, including the additional second round of modifications based upon Plant City's changes to be acceptable. And I don't mean to misspeak, and if they have anything to say during the public hearing, I'd ask for them to come up. What I'm proposing for the city to do, and I'll have to ask Ms. Mooney if it's time, if we have time to get a publication and for a notice of enactment for the August 1 meeting, is in order to fulfill the statutory requirements as close as possible, that we treat the meeting tonight as a first reading of the ordinance, and we have a second reading and adoption. At the next meeting, we go out and send out the notice of enactment. In that way, we are in compliance with the statutory requirement under 337.401 about providing notice to the Secretary of State prior to first reading. So with all of that being said, I'm here to answer questions about the revised document that I sent to you this afternoon. If you find it acceptable, then what I'd do is I'd provide, I'll provide a summary of what the changes are in the ordinance that's been presented to you, and then ask for the city council to go ahead and approve it tonight on first reading, supplemental first reading, and would have a second reading and public hearing at the next city council meeting, so long as we can get the notice of enactment done timely. And I don't know--
I can try, but I, the deadline was Monday, but I can make an attempt.
Okay. Well, so long as we can get the notice of enactment in, so that we could have the second reading and public hearing on August 1, I'd say, let's go forward and do it. If we can't, so that we'd have to push it back to the second meeting in August, then I recommend that we do it. I just want to do that to make sure that what we put into effect is something that we can enforce. And it does have a retroactive date back to July 1.
So you're treating today as supplemental?
But this is a first, we'll consider this as a first reading, and we'll have an adoption hearing either on August 1 or on August 15, depending upon when we can get the notice of, if we can get the notice of enactment done timely in order to get it done for August 1. If we can't, we'll adopt it on August 15.
Okay. So we're going to have a first hearing, first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1426 to amend Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances, wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, and the public hearing is open. And I guess we have any other further presentations by staff regarding that?
I think I've, I think I've pretty much covered it for Ms. Lynn.
Forty-six pages.
Okay. This is quite a bit of changes that have occurred in the last couple hours here, so. Hopefully, we all got that from you, and I believe now we'll open it to comments from the public. I believe I have one person that would like to speak on this, Mr. Jack Ritter. Name and address in three minutes, please.
Jack Ritter, 227 Willowick Avenue. Good to see you again.
Sure.
I think that all of you need to go back and look at your city of Tampa council meeting this morning. There were several people who got up and spoke about this issue. I'm a retired telecommunications engineer. Midly was with the military, but I had a lot of interface with the public. Granted, been retired for a few years, still have a little here. But I'm going to tell you, you have no idea what these antennas look like. If you get multiple people in here, you have a whole display of antennas up and down the right-of-way. You know that they can also go in the easements, in the backyards. This is going to be very invasive, folks. You've got to have this quantified. You may have one antenna at 20 feet and another at 40 feet. What are you going to do then? How are these things going to be powered? Is it magic? No, they're going to have a box, looks like one of these postal boxes, sitting on the road. How many more obstacles, Bob? The cops have to go out and police people up from, call the ambulance and what have you. This thing is a zoo. I know people want it. It's an economic issue, and I'm all for that. But we need to put this thing off until we get some of these experts, you people can figure out who they were that testified today, get them in here and listen to them. All right? That's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter before we close the public hearing? Anyone else would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Now open for a council discussion.
I spoke to a representative of Tampa City Council on Monday, and asked him what they were doing, because I had read the same, that they were holding a moratorium. And from what I understand, the moratorium is on accepting any applications. Then, of course, they were still working that out, and they were, continued to have this conversation. We keep in mind, this isn't something any of us asked for. I mean, this is something that, talk about home rule, this was something that we've been handed. I want to make sure that we don't get sued, okay? That's number one, and that we can get this done. So if it, if it means that we postpone it tonight, and it's going to be retroactive to July 1 anyway, I wouldn't have a problem postponing this. Not so much that I want to do everything the city of Tampa does, but, you know, my question would also be, we've only heard from one, and Plant City didn't hear from any. That concerns me a little. I mean, maybe I, I'm looking out, I know you don't want to speak, but it was, how many others could we, that's a loaded question, and I don't, I need to put you on the spot.
I think the reason you didn't hear from other people is they don't have active projects in the city.
Could you, could you give your name and address, please?
Chris Parra, 1246 45th Avenue in North, St. Petersburg, Florida. Chris Parra. And I run the small cell division for Unity Fiber, which is a Tampa Bay company, publicly traded. We're based in St. Petersburg, and we built the first small cell system in the southeast in Atlanta in 2014. So we've been doing these for several years now, and know the technology really well. Like Plant City, the reason they didn't get public comment was that nobody's getting ready to file permits for one of these, and so they, people just weren't aware. If we had a project in Plant City, when that had come up and the timing aligned, then we would obviously have submitted comment, the same comments we gave to Mr. Connolly about your proposed ordinance, we would have given to Plant City as well.
Well, we're not painting you out to be the bad guy.
No, no, no. We went, we approached staff. We try and work with the cities that we build these in, but they are necessary for 5G, and there will be, you know, other providers will approach Temple Terrace over the next three years, for sure.
On that, on that issue--
Thank you.
Right now, the city of Temple Terrace does not have any regulations at all with, in its code of ordinances relating to the use of rights-of-way. To the extent that we adopt, remember last year, we adopted the ordinance relating to signage in response to a Florida Supreme Court, excuse me, a U.S. Supreme Court decision that forced all municipalities to address that issue. So we, so we got something done on the books that we knew that from time to time, we may need to modify. My recommendation is, we go forward with the ordinance, let's, you know, we hold the first reading. To the extent that we believe at second reading and public hearing that additional revisions are necessary in order to protect the city, we can always, we can always do that. But we need to get some regulations on the books. To the extent that those three months, six months, nine months from now are modified in some way, there's always the ability to modify the regulations. But right now, having regulations on the books that apply as of July 1, and we haven't received any applications, to the best of my knowledge, since this new law went into effect. This, you know, this ordinance, although it's not a model ordinance, this is effectively an ordinance that in a very similar shape is being, in the process of being adopted by many jurisdictions around the state right now that are getting out in front of this issue. And, you know, having spoken with Mr. Buckman about the Tampa moratorium, not going to render opinions on that. I haven't spoken with the city attorney's office on the issue. To the extent that the city of Temple Terrace wants to adopt a moratorium, for some reason, you always have the ability to do that, but you don't have a moratorium in front of you at this point in time. Instead, what you have is an ordinance that's placing regulations on the use of rights-of-way. So I'd say, let's go forward, let's do the, let's pass this on first reading. I can describe to you the modifications that are in the document that you saw today, to the extent that you want to. At second reading, have a continuation of the public hearing for further consideration of the issue. You can certainly do that, but I think we want to move the ball forward so that you've got regulations on the books.
Okay. Thank you for that answer.
Any other discussion with council? Councilmember Ross.
I do, I have some discussion. And first of all, some of the proposed changes by Unity are clearly the right. I mean, they, to change something from 30 days' notice for them to move something to 90 days, that's reasonable. To, I think we had a mistake on our poll height that was not consistent with the statute, that makes sense. A number of them are reasonable. Some of them, I don't think they are reasonable. And pardon me for being a little blunt, but this legislation was shoved down our throats by those in Tallahassee, over our very vocal objections. And now, the industry representatives are trying to put the words in our ordinance. And, and some of these changes--
We'll talk. We'll consider it frustrating.
I don't, some of these changes, to me, are inappropriate, and I won't stand behind. I mean, for me, one, they want to change where we have something, if it's unreasonably interfering with the convenience safe, blah, blah, blah. They want to add the word "interfering" in a substantial way. Well, I'm not stupid. I know that term "substantial" has legal connotations. I don't know that the statute requires us to put that word in there. Another one is, if they, in the installation of this stuff, if they break another utility, our proposed thing says that they're responsible for it. Their response, not totally off-base, where they said, well, what if the utility was incorrectly installed in the first place? May not be our fault. I'm good with that, but instead of fixing it, we took the whole thing out, saying that they, where is it? We took the whole thing out, instead of fixing the paragraph, they want us to strike the whole thing, so that if they break another utility, it's not addressed in the ordinance. I don't buy that.
Mr. Ross, here's, let me just clarify for you. The document that they sent on Friday included many, many changes to the ordinance, lots and lots of changes. The document that I sent to you today, excuse me, today at noon, adopted a very few of the changes--
That's this one.
No, that's not, that's not--
That's the one I got from you at noon.
No, this is the one.
These are pages of it. This isn't the whole thing.
Yeah, this, we're, we're, hold on a second. The document where there, we've got-- Section 19 being taken, being taken out. This is their document, Andy. That's not, we didn't take out any wholesale sections. We didn't do anything of this work. The document that's the new one is the one that would be the, the one with red line changes that came in about 4 o'clock, 4:00 today. And the city, the city clerk put it at the day as--
So that's this one?
For you.
Okay. Well, I read what I got at noon, which I thought was pretty late notice at noon. I didn't read what--
And you're right. I can't tell you that it's not late notice. I can just tell you that under the, under the timeline that we had, and the comments that came in, we were responding as quickly to the comments from the, from the providers we could. The document that you're looking at here, there, that has wholesale strikeouts of provisions, that was the document that was, that was recommended and suggested by Unity Fiber that we looked at, and we didn't agree with--
Yeah, you have to use your microphone.
Well, I stand somewhat corrected. I was reading what I got at noon. I spent all afternoon reading this. I didn't know there was a new version that came in. Well, I don't know how we can vote to approve something that it's 43 pages long or something. I mean, I haven't read it, the newest version.
Can, can we approve this on first reading, and then whatever changes we have between now and second reading, make the changes on second reading?
You can make change, we can make changes on second, on second reading. And I'll tell you, what I'd like to do is, the document that came in this afternoon, if I could walk-- Did this, I'm not sure if you have--
This is what was left of the D S.
Yeah, yeah, okay, there we go.
How long ago we got during the meeting?
Well, I mean, what we can, what we can do, just so you, just so that you know the changes, I can in about five minutes, go through the changes that were made, so that you can see what, what--
But I don't, I don't think that's enough. I think we need to, we need to have an opportunity to read the whole document. Okay? And we may find some things in here that we want to talk about that you and he thought were okay, that really, that don't fit the needs of the city.
That's understood. Then we could, we could continue the first reading of this to the August 1 meeting.
I would agree with that recommendation to do that there. So we need a motion to go ahead and--
So the--
Vote to continue this public hearing to August 1 meeting.
So right now, what we're doing is, we're simply, we're simply holding a first reading of the ordinance on August 1. So if we just have a motion to continue the first reading of the, of the ordinance to the, to the August 1 meeting, and the ordinance that will, that will be on the agenda is the ordinance that you received mid-afternoon, this, this afternoon, that has the changes in it that were made by, by me, based upon the request from Unity Fiber and review of the Plant City modifications.
Councilmember Pogorlitch.
Ken, I'm going to make a small revision to that. I don't have a problem with postponing this, and I think we should postpone it to the next week, but because of the apparent confusion about what we have with the D S and what you sent at noon, and what you said later, would you please send everybody a new clean, not clean, redlined copy of what you think the final ordinance should look like?
Yes, sir.
So that we can all read that between now and August 1, and comment as to things we may want to change.
I'll send it to an email, both with, in a redline form and in clean, so you can see both.
That would be, that would be wonderful. So I would move that we postpone first reading of the ordinance until our next meeting on August--
Continue it.
Continue the, the public meeting for this particular ordinance until our next meeting on August 1.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried to continue the public hearing to August 1, which will have a first, which will have the first reading, continues the public hearing and first reading on August Okay, item 7, council business. There ain't council business. Councilmember Donahue.
Sorry, I'll make it brief. All right. So we are all, we've all received a memo from HR, asking us to put together a valuation for a city manager, which is due tomorrow. Okay? I have no problem with that. I'm working on that. I do have a problem, however, with the last part, which was the department evaluations. And I'll tell you why. I'm, you know, everything we're told tells us to stay out of the departments, to, to not be involved with the departments. And yet, I'm being asked to give them a grade. And, I mean, the grade is very specific, operating beyond expectations, operating as expected, or operating, operation needs attention. Well, I can't stay out of their business and know how they're doing, and I really have not been given anything to judge them. I don't have any financials, I don't have any goals that they've reached or didn't reach. I don't, I mean, I really, I'm not comfortable. I mean, obviously, I can go down here and there, some of them, I'm like, oh, yeah, eight, right away. Because I happen to go to the gym, and I know all about the leisure services. So my question is, can we either, and this is, this is for us to decide how to handle this. Can we either reserve this and not do it until perhaps later on, when we've seen some of this information? Or can we just strike this altogether from the evaluation?
Councilmember Pogorlitch.
Mine's turned in, okay? I had no problem understanding what was required. If I didn't feel comfortable in grading a particular department, you put N/A, not applicable. And just do, it's not, you're not, those particular reviews are not going to determine anybody's raise or anybody's hiring or firing. Just, you just do the best you can with it. If you're not comfortable giving a department a grade, just put, don't put anything, or put N/A. It's easy. I don't, I don't understand why you're over-complicating this.
I'm not trying to complicate it. That's my point, is I, I'm not sure why this particular review is required of us. I understand.
Then don't do it.
Okay, well, that's what I, guess what I'm asking for. I didn't know that you were the one deciding it, so sorry.
I just, well, let's be cordial. I mean, there certainly is issues that Councilmember Donahue brings up about it. There are certain issues in some departments, which I am not prepared to evaluate yet, and did not evaluate them and basically said that in them. So, you know, we can clearly fill it in any way we'd like on an evaluation. I mean, if I didn't feel adequately enough to give an evaluation on a particular department, I indicated that in there. If I felt that some departments are doing well based on what I knew, I indicated that. So I think, you know, that's more of an addendum to the evaluation than anything else.
Okay. All right, thank you. I do have one other comment on the CRA meeting. I want everybody to remember that this workshop or this convention that's happening in August is 100% retail. And our project is not 100% retail. So I, every time we talk about hanging our hats on this convention that's coming up, lack of a better word, I'm always wondering why we find this so important. I, I'm not saying it shouldn't be part of our outreach. I just wonder why it's given the elevation of status that it has. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Any other council business? Councilmember Ross?
It's going to be pretty close to what the 30-day requirement is anyway, though. So it's not, it's not like we're holding it open for... I do have, when you're done.
I am, thank you.
I have a couple things. One is, I was absent at the last meeting where the charter review idea was discussed. I read the minutes. If I understand this incorrectly, somebody please jump in and correct me. But from the minutes, it would appear right now that we're kind of stalled, and that we have nothing underway. And the sticking point, at least it appears from the minutes, is whether we appoint a committee or whether the council decides what's going to be on the ballot. My question for, I don't know, Mr. Connolly, Ms. Mooney, I'm not sure who they... I know that there's a requirement that we submit proposed changes to the city charter to the DOJ, Department of Justice, for them to evaluate. I know there's some fixed points along the way. It has to go to the supervisor of election by a certain date. It has to go to DOJ. Do, what's the timeline? Do we have enough time to impanel a committee? If that's the only sticking point, we owe it to the citizens to move forward on this. If we have time, do we have time to do this committee?
To the best of my knowledge, the answer is yes. You can give your committee, you know, restraints on the amount of time that they have to do their job. So it's not something where you have to give the committee a certain period of time. Ultimately, you need to adopt an ordinance, and the ordinance would provide for, you know, a variety of different things, including the ballot language and so on and so forth. You'd have public hearings on that. So, but as far as there being a timeline that would allow for it, off the cuff, I would say, I believe, because we're talking about it in election next November, that the answer is yes.
Well, let me ask you this, without forming this into a motion. If I'm correct, and this is the big sticking point, it's no secret that I'm in favor, because a lot of this stuff, in my opinion, is housekeeping. But I know the two of you feel much differently. And Bob, you're sitting as mayor right now.
Correct.
So, I know, right?
Vice Mayor acting as mayor.
Right, well, I know, I know. I would prefer not to have to go through the incumbents of a committee to get what I think are pretty minor changes. But I know there's differences of opinion on that. And we're stuck. If we don't do something, we're not going to do anything. So if we did impanel this committee, are we, I guess I'm asking you to voice your, you know, I mean, can we move forward on this?
I, my, if you're asking me my personal opinion, my personal opinion is, some of the changes that have been instituted or looked at in there are minor changes that can be accomplished by council. There's a major significant one, in my opinion, shouldn't be handled by three members of councils. It should be addressed by a citizen review committee to bring forth before it goes, and should have some outside voices looking at it and other people who are looking at this. I don't think it should take very long to do it. And I believe the city attorney is correct. We, you know, any group of committee that we get together to go ahead and look at something, you can get things done fairly quickly when people put their mind to it.
Right.
And, you know, it's not, we have a 400-page charter. It's about 25, 30 pages. And we're really kind of already outlining some of the things to look at that we, some are court-ordered, technical changes. Some are small changes. Some are insignificant changes. One's a major change, in my opinion, changing the whole entire form of a government structure here since the inception of the charter. So that's a big change. I think it should just not come from three. My opinion is, it shouldn't come from three people.
Well, we clearly have a different, I mean, there's a 3-2 divide here. There's no secret on that. And it doesn't make anybody a bad person. It just means we aren't going to come to consensus.
Correct.
What I'm asking is, can we live with this committee or not?
I sure can.
I can. I think Councilmember Pogorlitch was wanting to speak on the issue.
Yeah, it's, to me, the issue is not the committee. I think the divide is, somebody's trying to get a do-over. I think we voted on this at least once, maybe twice, that we were going to have the language drawn up. And if, you know, I think, one of your concerns, Sherry, was that the people wouldn't have any say in it. Well, they would. We'd have to have two readings of it before it got to be official. And anybody can speak on it during that time. It's not, to me, it's not about putting a committee together. It's about the fact that, through due process, we voted to put this, to get the language to be put on the ballot in the works. We did that a couple times. I think we, informally did it at our meeting way back when, when we were talking about the goals of the city council. And I know that, you know, there's some discussion about whether it actually happened that way and what was in the minutes. And, you know, I haven't gone back and looked at the video of that particular meeting. But there were two other meetings in which we voted on it. And I think the last vote we had, we voted on it, and it ended up being, you had made a motion to withdraw it, and it ended up made it 2-2. Bob wanted to have a third vote as mayor, who probably couldn't do that. Then he said, "Well, if you're going to bring it to me, I'll veto it." And I don't know if you can do that either, but...
I don't believe I said I'll veto it. I just asked the questions of that requirement in the charter regarding the circumstances surrounding it.
Yeah, so it's, you know, I'm all in favor of getting along and being collegial. But this is the fourth time or fifth time that we've had this discussion. We know where any vote's going to go. Let's just move forward. I know you guys don't agree with that. I know you don't like the language. I know you don't, you're vehemently opposed to at least one aspect of the, it's not even, we're not even saying it's official. All we're saying is, let's get some language in front of the people, see if they want it to put on the ballot.
We're rehashing the same argument.
Yes.
Although I didn't want to do that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What I'm trying to do is build some consensus and got to get a feel for where we are. So I'll get back to you guys on this.
Can I just...
Obviously, the consensus thing didn't work out.
Well, I think the consensus thing didn't work out because it was never really voted on for that purpose at a meeting. And if it's put on the agenda to be discussed at the next meeting, then your vote will probably go 3 to 2 to have those changes put forth for an ordinance to be drawn up. If we have five people here at the meeting, I would suspect that's how it will go. But it hasn't been put on an agenda item for anyone to vote on.
We can drag this out forever because the time, the clock is running.
Correct.
Let's get it on the agenda, let's get it over with. Put it on the agenda for next meeting. We'll have a debate, whether the language is right or wrong, or the moving forward, whether it is right or wrong. Because that's really where we're at right now. That's the stage we're at.
I don't know, I don't think there's any point in putting it on the agenda unless somebody's going to make a motion. We're going to argue for another hour and come up to the same spot we're at.
But if that's what, if that's what's going to put this to bed, I move that we put that particular item on the agenda for next meeting so that we can have another vote to put this thing to bed.
There's a motion, is there a second?
What is it that's going to be put on the agenda? But David, there's no point in doing that if he's going to veto it anyway.
He can veto it.
Yes, he can.
He's not the mayor. He's acting, he's the vice mayor acting as...
We're going to waste an hour, come to a 3-2 vote, and then he's going to veto it. We can't overcome the veto with a 4-1, that we're never going to do it.
But we don't, but he can't veto it.
Yes, he can.
May I make a comment?
There's a motion, is there a second?
May, no, there was no second.
Okay, motion dies for lack of a second.
May I just make a comment? If you're on the prevailing side of an argument, you can change your mind. Mr. Ross, apparently, is just, has, is asking simply the question whether or not we should put together a commission or a council to look at this. Which is, I'm not going to go into what I think or don't think about this whole change. That's the question that he's presented tonight, is, would it be beneficial for us not to make the deciding factor, which is what Vice Mayor Bob Boss has said to us? Sorry, acting mayor. Enjoining my opinion. So the question is, by Mr. Ross, is should we entertain, if I'm understanding you right, it's not whether we should vote on this or not, or, like you say, it's a matter, and being on the prevailing side of any vote that we, it has been decided by comment that there was a vote, then he has that right to bring it back because he actually voted in favor in the past. So you have the right to ask that question at this point. And if that's the way you're going, then you, you may do that. I cannot do that because I voted against it. So just telling you what you may do, if you choose to.
If I may. Sherry just made my point. She voted on it. She voted against it. Okay, so we've already voted and passed this, at least twice. I'm not sure, I don't understand, I'm upset, not because you disagree. I'm upset because this has been decided.
I didn't bring this up, by the way.
I know, I know you didn't. But you just proved my point. You said he was on the prevailing side of the vote. That's my point.
Okay, well, my effort here was to achieve consensus, which is not going to happen. So I have, I do have a couple other quick, should be non-controversial things. One is, I just want to inform the council and the public that the Rotary Club, which, by the way, I'm not a member, but Mrs. Donahue is, and I asked her if she wanted to announce this, but she deferred. I learned yesterday at the Riverwatch Task Force meeting that the Rotary Club is going to host a cleanup of the Middle River on August 19th at 8:30 in the morning. It's a Saturday morning at 8:30. They will launch from Rotary Park. If you have a canoe, or a kayak, or a small boat, and you want to help clean up the river in Temple Terrace, that'd be a great opportunity. It'd be a lot of fun. So see you out there at 8:30 on Saturday, August 19th. The last thing I have is just to inform the council in case you hear wind of this. I recently learned of this. There is a growing group of residents who play a sport called pickleball at the rec center. And they've organized this into quite a group, and it's growing larger. Truthfully, I never heard of pickleball until recently, but a lot of the residents are doing that. It's a growing thing. There's an idea, and that's all it is at this point, is an idea, that they would like to form a club, actually form a 501(c) organization, and repurpose the tennis courts down near the community garden near Scout Park. Now, they would enter into a memorandum of understanding or a lease agreement of some type or something, where they would bear the expense of resurfacing, restriping these courts in order to make them a pickleball facility in lieu of a tennis facility. It wouldn't cost the city anything, at least if I get to vote on that. For my, we don't have any money for that. I was clear to them when they, when they talked to me. But they would like to raise the funds if the city is amenable to entering into this agreement. It's very preliminary. It's an idea. It's a discussion. It may never come to fruition. I mention it so that if you hear of it, you'll know what's going on. And also, for the public, if you live down there and you use the tennis courts or have feelings about this, please interact with Mr. Langfield or the city manager, or myself, or somebody, and let us know what you, what you think of that idea as it moves forward. And I am done.
Is there any other council business?
I do. I have a couple of points of clarification, and I'm going to get quick. We've been here for quite some time. One is, there's just, and I'm just going to mention it and move on it. The discussion a minute ago about this charter issue, we spent two hours at the last meeting saying that there was not a vote. Ms. Donahue just said she was not on the prevailing side. So she couldn't bring it up, but you could. So there was a major conflict here. Number two, a question for Mr. Connolly. There was discussion about the charter vote, and Mr. Boss indicated that he may have the option to possibly veto. So can he vote in, on one side, and come back and veto on the other side? That charter specifically for the mayor that does not vote. Now, if he's a vice mayor, or whoever it may be, I don't want to pick on Mr. Boss, but whoever's in that seat. or whoever it may be, I don't want to pick on Mr. Boss, but whoever's in that seat, if they vote, an example, the vote is 3 to 2, and we go to charter, then there's a resolution to be approved, can the mayor veto that after he was already voting on the descending side? That's the question, that's why Mr. Pogorlitch's vote did not get a second, because there's just too much confusion, and there's not enough answers.
Just one issue, I never said I was going to veto it, I asked, I asked the city attorney what, how that related in context to the change in the, we've had, to clarify it.
Mr. Boss, if I said you were going to veto it, I misspoke, I said there was discussion of the mayor possibly being able to veto something. So I just need clarification, can the vice mayor, acting as mayor, vote on the DS, and then turn around, and because he didn't, or he or she, or whoever it may be, they didn't like the vote, veto it, and then has to be brought back to the next city council meeting by a supermajority vote? Is that even possible? Doesn't sound like it is, it sounds like you're voting on both sides, and it's not against Mr. Boss, it's just clarification on the ordinance, obviously, that's another flaw in the ordinance, if in fact that's the case.
So, so you've got two provisions in your charter that deal with this issue. The first is section.
Microphone.
Section 2.09, which reads, "Before going into effect, all ordinances passed by the council shall be submitted to the mayor or in his absence to the vice mayor. If approved, the mayor shall sign the ordinance whereupon it shall become law. If disapproved, the mayor shall return it to city council with written objections." So 2.09 specifically contemplates it being provided to the mayor or in his absence to the vice mayor. So here we have, in, in his absence, the vice mayor acting as mayor, so that's, that's one section. Then we've got, under 3.03, duties and powers, "The mayor shall preside at all meetings of the city council, should be recognized as the head of the city government for ceremonial purposes and by the governor for purposes of martial law. However, he shall have no regularly assigned duties. Except to break any tying vote by the city council, the mayor shall have no vote. A vice mayor who shall act as the mayor and assume those duties during the mayor's absence or disability shall be elected by the city council in a manner determined by the city council rules of order and procedure. Vice mayor shall be counted in the termination of a quorum of council member, members, and shall discharge the duties of a council member, including, including voting." So the vice mayor, according to 3.03, who shall act as mayor and assume those duties during the mayor's absence or disability, he has this, he has the same powers as the mayor. I mean, that's, that's what your, your charter provides for in 3.03. 2.09 provides that all ordinance shall be submitted to the mayor or in his absence to the vice mayor. So as I read those two together, the, that provides the vice mayor with the ability to disapprove an ordinance, in which case he'll return it to the city council with written objections. At the next regular city council meeting, the objection shall be entered in, in full upon the record, and the council should consider the mayor of objections. If upon consideration, the city council shall pass the ordinance by affirmative vote of four council members, the ordinance or ordinances shall then become law of the mayor's objections to the contrary notwithstanding." So you've got, I mean, that's, when you read the two together, that's what they, that's what they provide, the, the vice mayor, while the mayor is absent, or here, we, we have a vice, the, the mayor resigned, the vice mayor assumes the duties of mayor, and that includes the ability, under 2.09, it says veto, the, the language of the, under it doesn't specifically talk about veto, but it says disapproved, in which case he's not signing it.
With all due respect, wouldn't it, if that were the case, you just mentioned it says, in one part of that paragraph, it says mayor or vice mayor, and the other part where it says disapproved, it only says mayor, it doesn't say mayor or vice mayor.
Just imagine it from there. Then, I guess, I guess I'd ask the question, what's the point of the first sentence that, after the comment that says, or in his absence to the vice mayor?
We had a, this, this, not this particular thing came up, but the idea of whether we would be calling him mayor or vice mayor came up, for those particular reasons, whether or not he would get a vote. You can't sit there and tell me that he can vote as a council member, and then go ahead and disapprove, that's what the word says in the charter, it doesn't say veto, disapprove of something that he voted against, just because he voted against it. That does, that, tell me if that makes sense.
Well, under, if, if Kim Lineball was here, and you had an ordinance that was adopted, and he passed the tying vote, again, or, and he passed the tying vote, I guess he, well, he'd be casting a tying vote against it, so you've got a point, because if he was voting in that case, it wouldn't come up, because he wouldn't vote for something.
Right, he voted against.
He wouldn't vote for something, and then veto, and then veto it.
Right.
So you, you raise, you raise a good point in that respect. On the other hand, your charter says what it says. Now, I can tell you what I read in the charter, ultimately, it's up to city council to interpret its charter, so to the extent that you interpret the provisions that I read to you in a different manner, that's something that you can do, all I can tell you is my best thoughts based upon what I'm reading.
Okay, so we now have a vote to interpret it differently, okay? Bob doesn't agree with that, and then he, he doesn't approve the, the interpretation.
There's two things, just regards to that, and I'll, I'll be pretty brief on them. One, it's, it only applies to city ordinances, it doesn't apply to resolutions or the votes, it only applies to city ordinances. Two, is I brought it up so it would be, rather than bringing it up to everybody as a surprise of me reading the ordinances as to what this may or may impact a vote on an ordinance, so it was clearly out, out in the open regarding what the city charter says. And three, if our timeframe goes sufficiently enough, where after October 10th, when there's a new mayor, it becomes a moot point to go ahead and do it either way.
After October 10th, we'll actually have a mayor.
Correct, we'll have a mayor then.
Yeah.
So then it becomes a moot point on what I would do regardless.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Ma, um, Mr. Boss, if I may ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Connolly to provide us a legal opinion as to what the scenario procedures are, as he just indicated. Interpretation will be based on the city council interpretation, and therefore, because obviously, there is confusion and ambiguity in it, and I'm not licensed or entitled to try to interpret the law, that's why we have, you know, you and your firm here. So if you can provide us some sort of guidance on that, and, and, at the, before next meeting, then at least we know where we're at, because we've already spent, the last meeting was a few hours, today, we've spent more, more time on it, because if we know what it is in black and white, we'd obviously can decide which way to go. If we don't, we're going to be bouncing back and forth like, like we've been doing tonight, like a circus.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other council business? Any new business? City manager report.
I'll be brief. Just a couple reminders here, and we'll get out of here. This Thursday, we have a, our third town hall meeting at Greco Middle School, is being held in the cafeteria, 7:00, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We'll be using the Greco facility, right? So, second reminder is about the budget workshop, it's on Friday beginning at 1:00 PM.
Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday, and Tuesday. We're almost into Wednesday.
Do you have any, anything else? Is there any other business to come before council? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.